Perfect, thank you so much.
Testing.
Testing.
Testing, testing.
Test one, check one, test one.
Yep, we're good.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hoskins. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Napa County Board of Supervisors. I will call this meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Here.
Chair Katrel.
Here. And I would like to ask Monarch Justice Center's Michelle Farhat to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now it is time for the Pet of the Week. And this morning, we have Zippy. Good morning, Luisa. And please tell us about Zippy.
Hi, everybody. Today, I brought Zippy today. It was a really easy choice to make when I was thinking, who should I bring to the Board of Supervisors this week? We have a lot of kittens, a lot of, not a lot of puppies anymore, they were adopted. But I was just thinking, okay, who's at the shelter right now that really needs to get out, that is a really good dog, shows really well, and is just due for his time? And I was thinking, Zippy's probably the best candidate for that. Zippy came in as a stray. He was found here in, on Dry Creek Road. He was picked up by Animal Control. There was a possible injury for his right foot, but they just found him limping. Once he was taken to the hospital, they were just figuring out, you know what, he's an older dog. It's most likely just arthritis from walking all night long. And then, once he came back to the shelter, he got the, he got the clean bill of health, and then he was placed up for adoption. The only thing with Zippy is, he is just a dog that shows his age, meaning that, for me personally, it's the dogs that are all black. Once, once they start to get a little bit older, you start to see it on their, on their face. So if you see the gray whiskers on him, it just shows really well. But if you look at the rest of his body, for a 10-year-old dog, he looks amazing. He's still got a lot of energy. He still wants to go out for walks every single day. And if you want to just hang out at home, he does exactly just that. Right now, at the shelter, he is a green dog, meaning that he's one of the candidates that we use to train new volunteers, show them how to get in and out of the shelter, go out for walks. He socializes with other dogs. Here, so far, he doesn't really interact a lot with people. He'll kind of either come to you if, if he really likes you. If not, he'll just kind of give you a sniff, and he's like, eh, and then he'll go on around his way. So don't get, don't get your feelings hurt. I've, I've had my feelings hurt by him. But he's definitely ready, ready to go. And if you wanted to adopt him, this weekend was going to be the perfect opportunity. This Saturday, we are going to be waiving adoption fees. It is a Adopt-A-Day. It's a California, sorry, California-wide event. All shelters, rescues will be waiving their adoption fees. So if you are interested in a kitten, dog, rabbit, you can come down to the shelter this weekend on Saturday and adopt a, an animal.
All right. Thank you so much. So just a quick recap. Zippy, mature, distinguished-looking, active, and a great companion, and available for, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here.
Our next item will be approval of proclamations and commendations. We have two proclamations today, recognizing Pride Month and also Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Napa County. Is there any public comment on these two proclamations in the room or on the phones? Okay, then I will ask my colleagues for a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Ramos, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And I will get to, we will do the proclamations, but first I want to make a comment about our agenda. We will have a couple of switches. First of all, today, we are going to be adjourning in the memory of Jim O'Neill, and we will hear a little bit more about him in a few minutes. And second, we will be taking up board announcements before our regular business. So that is moving Item 8 up to right after these proclamations. And third, we will be moving two of our administrative items, 11C and 11D, to after our public hearing items today. So that will be after Agenda Items 12 and 13. So first, we will go ahead with the proclamations. I'm going to ask Supervisor Alessio to start with hers. And if we have folks in the room today to receive the Elder Abuse Month Proclam, Elder Abuse Prevention Proclamation, please stand with Supervisor Alessio. Thanks, folks, from Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Chair Katrel. This is an honor to do this, and, and thank you for being here to receive this proclamation. Elder Abuse Awareness Month, June 2025. Whereas, Napa County's older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity as valued leaders, mentors, volunteers, and community members who contribute greatly to the vitality and strength of our county. And whereas elder abuse is a silent epidemic, where one in 10 adults over the age of 60 experience some form of abuse in the United States, states with the cases still widely unreported, under-reported, whereas elder abuse can occur anywhere, whether in the public spaces or private homes. And addressing it requires bringing this issue into the light, raising awareness, and ensuring that older adults can age with dignity, respect, and grace. And whereas, on June 15, 2025, we join communities around the globe in recognizing World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, reaffirming our commitment to understanding, preventing, and responding to the mistreatment of older adults. And whereas, in 2024, the Napa County Health and Human Services Agency received 2,012 reports of elder and dependent adult abuse and neglect through its Adult Protective Services Program, with self-neglect and financial exploitation being most frequently reported concerns. And whereas, Napa County, along with its extensive network of government and community-based organizations, offers a comprehensive range of services designed to proactively address risk factors. Key partners such as Napa County Health and Human Services Agency, Adult Protective Services Program, the District Attorney's Office, and the Sheriff's Office collaborate closely to investigate abuse, advocate for victims, and pursue justice on their behalf. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on the third day of June 2025, does hereby recognize June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Napa County. We urge all community members to unite and strengthen the partnerships, developing innovative strategies for prevention and response, and reporting any suspected abuse or neglect, ensuring that older adults of Napa County can live and age in safety, health, and dignity. Thank you very much, and I'd like to bring you up here and have you say a few words. If I can give you this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio. Thanks. Good morning, Chair Katrel, Vice Chair Manfree, Honorable Board. My name is Erin Cador, and I'm a Health and Human Services Agency Deputy Director for the Conference of Services for Older Adults Division, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning to receive this proclamation on behalf of HHSA. As an Adult Protective Services social worker, I investigated hundreds of APS cases. As an Adult Protective Services Supervisor, I supervise the investigations of thousands of APS cases. When I think about what helps prevent older adult abuse and neglect, I think about services. Your Board made and continues to make significant investments in services that help keep Napa County older adults safe, happy, healthy, and most importantly, at home. Because of your Board's investments, by the end of this fiscal year, the Providence Information and Assistance Program will make about 2,300 referrals to Napa County older adults to help them maintain their independence. Molly's Angels will provide almost 5,000 rides to Napa County older adults, mostly for medical appointments. Community Action of Napa Valley will deliver almost 18,000 meals to Napa County seniors, and Share the Care will provide about 20,000 pieces of medical equipment and health supplies to Napa County older and disabled adults. These figures represent year one of your Board's recent three-year investment of master settlement agreement funds. So for Elder Abuse Awareness Month, HHSA expresses appreciation to your Board for the services available to Napa County older adults, so they can remain safe, happy, healthy, and most importantly, at home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's gather everyone in the well for a photo. I also just want to say thank you for calling out specific statistics. I think that helps us all understand the impact that our county investments are making. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Come on up.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this proclamation. My name, my name is Erin Harper. I'm the Victim Witness Program Manager at the District Attorney's Office. Those of us in our office know the devastating impacts that elder abuse can have. And as Erin shared, there's very sobering statistics about how often it occurs in this community. So we greatly appreciate the Board bringing awareness to this important issue. The timing of this proclamation couldn't be better. Tomorrow, June 4, our office, in partnership with HSSA, Molly's Angels, and Monarch Justice Center, are hosting a free event for the community. It's a safe event, Seniors Against Financial Exploitation. It begins at 8:00 a.m. at Napa Valley College's Performing Arts Center. Doors open at 8:00 for a community resource fair. From 9:00 to noon, there are experts speaking to community members about financial exploitation and abuse of elders. The morning session is aimed at seniors, their caregivers, and anyone who cares about seniors and wants to learn more about financial abuse. Then in the afternoon, from 1:00 to 5:00, we are hosting a training specifically for financial professionals in Napa County to learn about financial abuse investigations, mandated reporting, and ways that industry can work collaboratively to better protect their senior clients. So we invite all to attend. Thank you so much.
All right. So our second proclamation today is for LGBTQ+ Pride Month, June 2025. So anyone who is here as part of that celebration, please come join me. Thanks for being here. Hi. Napa County celebrates its diverse LGBTQ+ community and is committed to fostering visibility, dignity, equity, and respect for all people. And every June, residents and visitors unite in celebrating Pride Month, honoring the resilience, achievements, and aspirations of LGBTQ+ individuals while continuing the fight for justice and equality. Napa County stands firmly against all forms of discrimination and affirms the right of every person, regardless of age, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, to feel safe, valued, and supported. We commemorate leaders like Harvey Milk, whose courage paved the way for greater acceptance and progress, and we renew our commitment to those still fighting for visibility and safety. Through partnerships with organizations like LGBTQ Connection and initiatives such as Safe Space Kits, the county continues to invest in culturally responsive programming that fosters inclusion, visibility, safety, and belonging for LGBTQ+ people, strengthening allyship across schools, businesses, and institutions. Today, we honor the strength and contributions of the LGBTQ+ community, recognizing that inclusion, compassion, and freedom make our country stronger and more vibrant. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this third day of June, does hereby recognize June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Napa County. In doing so, we join LGBTQ Connection, First Five Napa County, and all advocates and allies around the world in standing with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community as they declare their pride and who they are and in whom they love. We call upon all members of the Napa County community to be allies to LGBTQ+ people by treating them with respect, equity, and compassion, and we celebrate the diversity and invaluable contributions they bring to our community. Welcome. Come on up.
Hi. My name is Adriana Rodriguez. My pronouns are she/her. I am a program coordinator for LGBTQ Connection. It's so important that queer people in Napa, especially youth, know that they are safe, supported, and seen, especially now, not just through policies, but through your decisions, investments, and your presence. Let's continue to be bold, lead with compassion, and striving for Napa to be a safe space for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Adriana, from LGBTQ Connection. Thank you, Chair Katrel, and supervisors, and everyone who made this proclamation possible. I'm Bailey, they, she, fabulously non-binary, and unapologetically myself. I'm also the Chair of Napa Queer Leaders Coalition and Napa Pride 20, I'm on the Napa Pride 2025 Pride Planning Committee. So thank you for this proclamation. It's no small thing to be seen officially, publicly, and with people. But, you know, let's be honest, we're, we're not here today because everything is fine. We're here because it's not, and because lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer-plus residents and our allies refuse to let silence or safety be a privilege afforded only to some. I'm showing up today for Pride Month and for LGBTQ+ people everywhere, not just in June, but year-round, because I was a queer, non-binary kid who grew up without a lot of role models. I couldn't even imagine myself as a healthy, happy adult. These, this kind of erasure isn't just painful, it's deadly. And we are still, every day, paying the price. As of June 2025, the United States is experiencing an unprecedented surge in anti-LGBTQ legislation. Over 900 bills targeting LGBTQ+ individuals, particularly transgender and non-binary people, have been introduced across various states. These measures, measures encompass restrictions on gender-affirming healthcare, limitations on public accommodations, and constraints on educational content related to LGBTQ topics. LGBTQ youth are more than twice as likely to report depression and suicidal thoughts than their peers, not because there's something wrong with them, but because there's something wrong with our systems. There are administrators, educators, service providers, community members that still treat their existence as a problem to solve, rather than a person to love. Our community spaces, the places meant to offer refuge and safety to us, have been vandalized, our youth center's logo defaced, and our people mocked, harassed, followed to their cars, and called slurs in broad daylight. Not decades ago, now, in Napa. I've experienced that personally, here. Our transgender and non-binary youth are not asking for special treatment. They are asking to go to the doctor without fear, to walk into classrooms and be called by their name, to use the bathroom without a debate, to grow up. And far too often, they are met with confusion at best and cruelty at worst. These aren't abstract issues. They're urgent, they're local, and they are all of ours to face. This month, Napa Pride 2025 invites you, you know, to really learn more about our local community. Join in the Pride Month celebrations. Celebrate with us in solidarity, not only for ourselves, but for future generations who, who deserve to grow up in a world that sees their light and doesn't really ask them to dim it, like a lot of people are asking our young youth to dim their light right now. You don't also need to show up for the party. You can show up for the people. Support LGBTQ Connection. They're our only LGBTQ nonprofit. Please donate to their annual Give Out Day fundraising campaign, which actually starts next week. Or actually, no, it starts on Thursday, this Thursday, the 5th. The link is up right now, so if you want to donate, check it out. You can also share our events. Go to nappapride.com to learn more. Advocate for change locally and nationally by calling your representatives. And be open to making mistakes, receiving feedback, and doing better next time. Help us build the future we need when we were all young. Because the truth is, we don't need pride proclamations because we're fragile. We need pride because we are fierce, and we are still fighting. We're fighting for joy. We're fighting for justice. We're fighting for the right to live, to love, and to lead with our whole selves. So treat So treat us like we matter, because we do. And we're not going anywhere. None of this, none of this, none of this, me, standing here, would be possible without the support of people like all of you who have watched people like me grow in this community for years. Without the help of the Napa Tourism Improvement District for giving us money to make Napa Pride amazing. To the Napa County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, who has served as Napa Pride's fiscal sponsor. And the Downtown Napa Association, who has been so amazing in hanging up the banners and supporting all our events. And really, everyday people like you, showing up for us in the community, telling us that you support us, that you see us, that you love us. It all matters. Thank you. Thank you. So at this point, we will do the shuffle that we were talking about in our agenda, and we will move to Item 8, Board Member Announcements. And I am going to ask my colleague Supervisor Ramos to lead us off.
Thank you so much, Chair Cotrell. We have lost a dear friend, an advocate of 4H, and I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the service of Jim O'Neill to the County of Napa and to thank my colleagues for adjourning in his memory later today. Jim O'Neill served as Napa County's 4H Youth Program Coordinator for decades. He started his service with the County of Napa in March of 2000. He was a colleague who never missed a 4H council or sponsoring committee meeting and stayed in constant contact with club leaders to be sure each activity, from monthly gatherings to summer camp... and I'll get back to summer camp, began on schedule and ran smoothly. Jim's reliability showed most clearly in the quiet, exacting work that kept young people safe and programs compliant. Jim personally reviewed every enrollment, tracked background checks, maintained records, and published a monthly newsletter that everyone knew would arrive on time on the first of the month. He made sure that information was in the hands of 4H families, like mine. More recently, Jim shepherded 4H clubs through the shift from paper forms to online enrollment. And those of us in 4H know what a monumentous task that was. We're all allergic to online and 4H. He guided every 4H club charter and set the bylaws into alignment with state templates. During his tenure, he helped sustain the 4H programs to see generations of young people benefit from the hands-on learning and development experiences provided by 4H clubs and summer camps. Jim was a staunch advocate and cheerleader for the Lost Pasada Summer Camp, a legacy that will remain with all of us. He created a work environment that really centered everyone around the youth. And most of all, he ensured that 4H, in his mind, I found a quote from 14 years ago, where he said he saw 4H sticking around for at least another 100 years. And he lived that. And those of us who are committed to 4H, myself serving on the management board, we believe that. And we believe that because we had advocates like Jim alongside of us. I want to extend my sincerest condolences to Jim's work family from the UC Cooperative Extension, to his spouse Karen, his children Sarah, Heather, and Patrick, who are here joining us. And I just want to ask his granddaughter, a little 4H member here, to just stand up and to show everyone this is how much Jim believed in 4H. We thank Jim for his service to the County of Napa and thank you for sharing him with us. And we will be adjourning in his memory today. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Ramos, thank you so much for sharing that. I have only... I only know the reputation of the Lost Pasada Summer Camp and how many people loved that and came away better for it. So how many family members of Jim's or friends do we have in the audience today? Thank you all for being here. That is wonderful. So, and it's an honor when we can recognize someone in a moment like this. So thank you guys for being here. So with that, I will turn it back to my colleagues for other board announcements. Supervisor Gallagher.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for that really moving tribute, Supervisor Ramos, and for the family for being here. It was really beautiful. Just wanted to report out on a few things. On Sunday, I attended the Annual Motherhood Awards, which is a fundraiser for the American Lung Association. It was sponsored... one of the sponsors was the Air District. I sit on that board. And I just wanted to share a very interesting statistic. That 50% of women who are diagnosed with lung cancer are non-smokers. And lung cancer among women is on the rise. So very important to remember and to speak with our healthcare providers about. Also wanted to say a thank you to J.R. Rogers and Leah Doyle and the Gallows for hosting the Napa County Fire Department Award and Recognition Event last Friday night. It was really a beautiful event and a really lovely opportunity for everyone in the fire department and our administrators, our board, et cetera, to be together and to celebrate our fire department. And also, just wanted to mention that there have been additional meetings with Generation Housing, which is an organization in Sonoma that has been doing some work here in Napa. Our board knows, and we asked for a couple of different housing reports last year that they provided. Their work is incredible. They are providing us with the statistics we need to tell the stories of housing in Napa County and what kind of housing we need to be building and who we need to be serving. And it's very invaluable. And I just wanted to say that I very much support their involvement here in Napa County and their collaboration with the county and our cities and our town. And I really look forward to the additional work that they'll be doing in Napa County. That's all for now.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I also want to thank Supervisor Ramos for the beautiful tribute. I'm wondering if we can, since there's so many family, so much family here, if we can do a picture just for them to have.
Great idea. Let's do that.
Because that was... what an incredible man and leader and community member. In terms of just general activities, we're all out there, you know, working and part of this community, attending many events. Some of them, I just want to thank, you know, those who held Memorial Day services. I attended the Altville Pioneer Cemetery Memorial Day Service and the Napa Memorial Day Service. But I know the Veterans Home had a Memorial Day service, and Lena did. I'm sure American Canyon did. And they're all very meaningful. So I just want to thank everybody who's behind those services and who attended to recognize our service members of past, especially those who paid the ultimate price. I attended a Mentis event called Transforming Mental Health. This was presented by one mine, Brandon Staglin. It was an excellent presentation. It provided a lot of hope and a lot of action that they're involved in in really making a difference. I was there with our Director Jennifer Yasimoto and also Director of Baby Health Cassandra Islamy. So I want to thank them for also attending that. I've been on a couple field trips with GSA, which has been really interesting to learn about their groundwater levels and the work that they're doing, the Latino Roundtable Luncheon. I really encourage anybody who's interested in just learning more about our community. The last one was Congressman Thompson was a keynote speaker. I want to thank Supervisor Gallagher, who, you know, beautifully stated the importance of raising the pride flag that was done here. Supervisor Gallagher, that was really exceptional, and thank you for that. And let's see here. I'm going to... I'd like to last just kind of make a light announcement. This is something that I've been personally involved in, and that's a community-based, all-volunteer nonprofit called Operation with Love from Home. On Saturday, June 14th, starting at 9:30 AM, through community donations, we will be filling 1,000 care packages. They'll be going directly to our deployed service members around the world. This is something, these care packages, every single one has a name on it. Every single one has been requested into this community-based organization. And 95% of those are requested from service members who are currently deployed on behalf of themselves and our unit to help boost the morale. So all we need at this point are volunteers, Saturday morning, June 14th, starting at 9:30 AM at the Napa Valley College Gymnasium. And we could really use some more thank you cards. That's one thing we're short. We like to include, something that means very... a lot to them in these really great goodie boxes, is to top it off with a thank you card. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I know we have a couple more comments. If we still have family and friends, let's do the photo now before we offer more comments. All right. Supervisor Manfree, I know you had some comments you wanted to share.
Thank you. Yeah. It's a good reminder of how much just one person can make a difference in the community to see the family together and to hear all of the things that Supervisor Ramos shared about how meaningful the work that somebody could put into a single organization can be for so many people. And there's a lot of events this time of year, and I'm just seeing that throughout the community. So like my colleagues have shared, the firefighter appreciation dinner was just an amazingly joyful event to get to attend. I was really thankful for the Barriessa Highlands community for having me join them for a firewise and community meeting for their area last Saturday. And it was just great to connect with the residents out there and hear what their concerns are firsthand. And I'm really looking forward to continuing those connections, especially in our rural communities through the years ahead. I also had the opportunity to attend the Tulakay Cemetery Gate and Juarez Building dedication. The Juarez Building has been revived and includes some really lovely historical content now. So you can just walk in and enjoy some historical information about Tulakay Cemetery and the people who founded it. It's really beautiful. And next time you're in the area, I would encourage anyone to stop through. And there's also a new gate by Gordon Huether, who's here, which is at the east end by the newer building. So if anyone wants to check that out, it's also installed now, and it's lovely. What else have we got? Our community successfully got through Memorial Day, Bottle Rock, and Laanda in the last week. Good job, everybody. And the pride flag raising was really meaningful and wonderful to be part of. And the GSA field trips were fabulous. And I would love to see more opportunities like that for other members of the community beyond just the Groundwater Sustainability Agency membership. It's a great way to connect and see what's happening on the ground. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you. So much has been said already. Thanks to my colleagues for mentioning the firefighter appreciation dinner. I think that was a wonderful event. I'm not forgetting you. And then also the lunch that the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce hosted where Congressman Thompson spoke was a great discussion and a lot of engaged community members there. So kudos to them for that. The groundwater field trips, I agree, figuring out a way to get more people on those. They're great educational opportunities. And wonderful activities for the entire Memorial Day weekend. I know the Veterans Home had three different events. You could help put flags out, you could help put flowers out, or you could attend the ceremony itself. So I helped with the flag planting, and there were several scout troops there, brownie troops, and a particular shout-out to the American Canyon Football Team who came out to help. So that was great. Go Wolves. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, I think we've talked about this before, but the Sheriff's Department runs Citizens Academy. And congrats to Leah, my aide for completing that 12-week program. Kim Finney, I know you did that too. And I just want to say thank you to the sheriff. I think that is a great opportunity for residents to learn more about everything that your department covers. So I was able to attend the Mounted Posse Night and Search and Rescue. So those were very interesting, and I encourage other members of the community to participate in that too. So with that, I will turn it back to Supervisor Ramos for your comments.
Thank you so much and to my colleagues for granting me the time away to be in DC, to join MTC for advocacy. And I think sometimes it's hard to kind of relate at this large regional level what that means. And I will tell you what that advocacy means. We were specifically talking about Surface Transportation Block Grant dollars. Those are actually dollars that have come back to be invested into the Vine Trail, into the Green Island Improvement District for all those roads that lead to wine warehousing and ship our fine wines out into the rest of the world. They work differently here in Napa County, but they are incredibly vital to making sure we're able to weave all the funding sources around. So really being able to relate it back to Napa was truly special because those are really significant dollars. I also... I had the opportunity this last weekend. I do serve on the Board of the Bay Area Latino Elected Officials Association, BALEO, and I had the opportunity to welcome everyone to a summit here on Friday and on Saturday. And it was really great to be able to get together and talk in Napa. It's not hard to convince people to come to Napa. Obviously, we know that and appreciate that. But I do look forward to those continued partnerships because everyone just truly enjoyed the venue, enjoyed all the people that they met. We had some local officials that came out, including our sheriff, to join in that networking, and I really do appreciate that. And then I just wanted to just, again, acknowledge and thank the Chair for leading the charge on the firefighter appreciation dinner. It was really a nice one, to do it in air conditioning on a hot day. But to just take that moment to acknowledge really how far we've come. And this is one of those moments where I can say, when I started, it was not like that. And so I really do appreciate, and I love that everyone was able to make the time, all my colleagues, to be able to come out and acknowledge both our volunteer and our career firefighters. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Yeah. And it was fun to do the raffle as a group, too. And again, I appreciate that. Thanks Supervisor Ramos. And I just want to call out again, J.R. Rogers, Leah Doyle Stevens, all of the firefighting teams who supported this, Napa Valley Vintners, and the Rutherford... teams who supported this, Napa Valley Vintners and the Rutherford Volunteers. Everyone stepped it up to make it a great event. So with that, we will move on to a little bit more of the meat of the meeting and we will go ahead to item five, which is our consent calendar for special districts. And we have a request to pull item 5B from that. So I will ask if we have public comment on any of the items. We'll take all public comment at this point, 5A through 5D. Anyone in the room for these items or on the phones? You have a comment on?
5D.
5D? Sure. Come on up. The recreation improvement. Yeah. If you could come up to the microphone and make your comment, that would be great. And you can state your name and if you can keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Chair Cottrell, Distinguished Board, thank you very much for your time. I'm Tim Downey, lifelong Bay Area resident, now 33 years in Fairfield-Salano County. Married father of two Eagle Scouts who spent many days and weekends at the Barriessa Boy Scout Camp on Pewter Creek. I'm also blessed to know many days over these years with family and friends enjoying the beautiful and unique recreation opportunities available at Lake Barriessa. Through my membership at the Monticello Ski Club, I have volunteered on the Davis Master Swim Event, annual coastal cleanup event, and have helped organize and volunteered in the Cast for Kids event to take disabled and underprivileged children fishing for a day, an event that requires support across Napa County Services, Bureau of Reclamation, and many volunteers to bring this all on site. I am an ardent and enthusiastic supporter of the Lake Barriessa, Lake Barriessa Revitalization Program and want to thank the board and the Napa Barriessa Resource Improvement District for your extensive past works and ongoing efforts to explore the possibilities for a qualified concessionaire to operate at Lake Barriessa.
Mr. Dowdy, I believe you're actually speaking on 11B and we are right now on 5D, which is also a Barriessa item, but it's not about the concessionaire.
Okay. Would you like me to?
Yeah. Do you mind waiting until we get to that? Because I think we'll have some more public comment.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. And we will, we'll, we'll give you credit for that time too. So with that, is there other comments on 5A through D? Okay. Then I will request a motion from my colleagues for items 5A, C, and D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Alessio, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously and we will return to item 5B under Agenda Item 9. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have items 6A through 6X. Do we have any board comments or items to pull from that one? No? Is there anyone in the room who wants to offer public comment on items 6A through 6X? Or on the phones? Okay. Then I will go ahead and ask for a motion and a second on items 6A through 6X.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Manfree?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So now we are going to item seven, which is public comment. We'll take public comment for anyone who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda. Good morning, Ms. Benvenuto.
Good morning. Michelle Benvenuto, Wine Growers of Napa County. Wine Growers would like to ask this board to formally support SEQA reform and to begin evaluating how Napa's own policies can reflect the same principles. On May 27th, Chair Cottrell and Supervisor Alessio published an op-ed in the San Francisco Chronicle detailing how SEQA is being weaponized to block good projects. The story is familiar to us in agriculture in Napa County. Napa is the only county in California that requires SEQA review for vineyard projects. And it's not just vineyards. Wineries are also frequent SEQA targets. These are highly regulated operations, subject to extensive review, yet SEQA is being used not to improve projects, but to delay or stop them entirely. We support the intent behind SEQA, but it's being weaponized to kill agriculture through delay and legal threat. While SB 607 doesn't directly apply to agriculture, it introduces a principle that Napa should adopt locally, that challenging a project should be based on merit, not speculation or personal dislike. Additionally, that principle should influence how we handle appeals. The current system allows meritless appeals to delay ag projects, even when these projects meet all rules and regulations. We should not let our process be weaponized the same way SEQA has been. A single appeal, regardless of merit, can delay a project six to nine months. It costs the appellant just $2,000, yet the applicant often pays $20,000 in county fees and another $20,000 in attorney costs to defend a fully compliant project. We urge the board to take two steps. Support the intent of SEQA reform in Sacramento by publicly endorsing efforts like SB 607 that seek to curb abuse of the law. And two, update the current appeals process to discourage frivolous appeals. We appreciate Chair Cottrell and Supervisor Alessio taking leadership on this issue and encourage the board as a body to take a stand. Napa's policies should protect the environment, but they should also protect agriculture from process abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benvenuto.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Cottrell, supervisors and county staff. My name is Michelle Farhat and I serve as the Executive Director of Monarch Justice Center in Napa County. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I also want to acknowledge the county for recognizing Monarch in last year's end of year report. We were honored to be featured as well as touted in some of your newsletters and we appreciated the acknowledgement of our vital role in the community. But acknowledgement alone unfortunately will not keep our doors open. I'm here today on behalf of my entire board to express deep concern regarding the county's proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We were disappointed and frankly surprised to see that no funding has been allocated to victim services in Napa County. I understand that we're entering a year marked by financial uncertainty and hard choices, but you can imagine the uncertainty is felt even more acutely by the survivors we serve, individuals and families affected by domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, elder abuse, and some of, some of the most heinous child abuse you could ever imagine. These are the people who come to Monarch at the most traumatic and vulnerable moments of their lives. They deserve more than invisibility in their county's budget. We fully recognize your commitment to public safety and understand the importance of investments in the new jail and its wellness center, but we ask that the investment not come at the exclusion of victim services. The individuals we serve are often the very reason those systems exist. Our work addresses the aftermath of violence and prevents its recurrence, something that cannot be done through incarceration alone. At Monarch, one of our goals is to break the cycle of violence in our communities. We operate quietly due to the confidential and sensitive nature of our services, but I assure you, we are helping some of the most vulnerable members of our community who experience unconscionable crimes reclaim their safety, dignity, and stability. We believe this can be a moment of collaboration. Budgets are not just numbers. They are moral documents. They tell us what we value and equally what we don't. We know this board values public health, public safety, and community well-being. We urge you to reconsider their proposed budget and work with us to ensure that victims of violence are not left behind. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your willingness to listen. We look forward to working together to address this critical gap.
Thank you, Ms. Farhat. Good morning, Mr. Keneely.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm speaking to you on behalf of a group of roughly 20 neighbors near 3100 Sulphur Creek Road in St. Helena.
Sorry. Could you say your name, state your name for the record?
Pat Keneely. I'm talking on behalf of a group of roughly 20 neighbors near 3100 Sulphur Creek Road in St. Helena outside city limits. For 20 years, this was the site of the Hoffman Institute Retreat Center, which was mostly destroyed in the September 27th, 2020 wildfire. We're very concerned that hotel developer purchased the Hoffman property and has applied to build a roughly 33-room resort hotel with dining. The fire danger from hundreds of guests, staff, and diners deep in the woods west of St. Helena is scary. So is the thought of 500 or more new car trips per day down narrow, very curvy country roads. On November 22nd, 24, the developer in question submitted two long applications to the Napa Planning Division, a use permit exception to the conservation regulations, and an application for a certificate of the extent of legal nonconformity. The Planning Division's application review process is underway and the division says a public hearing will be announced in the near future. We have dozens of concerns about the project, but the big five to share today are extreme fire danger for the town of St. Helena, traffic and pedestrian safety on the narrow roads where hundreds of St. Helens and others walk every week, groundwater effects of proposed new wells, water contracts, wastewater systems, fire suppression systems, and parking runoff, and finally, environmental impact on Sulphur Creek and its delicate trout and steelhead populations and on the forest and wildlife the creek supports. We ask that you make sure that the Napa Planning Division gives the public sufficient time before a hearing to review and react to all the application materials. We believe 120 days' notice would be the minimum time needed to review the hundreds of pages of complex technical and legal information that were posted to the planning portal only two weeks ago. Second, we ask the supervisors to read up a bit on the project and to visit 3100 White Sulphur Springs and the county road it sits on, so you'll understand why it's such an unreasonable place for a hotel and why it's such a big community concern. Thanks for putting this on your radar.
Thank you, Mr. Keneely. Any other public comment in the room or on the phones at this point? Okay. On the phones?
We have a caller on the phone. We have Jeff Ellsworth. Jeff, can you hear me?
Hello? Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Jeff Ellsworth, former mayor. I'm getting an echo.
You gotta turn off your sound. Yep. You gotta, no, you gotta turn off your sound to whatever you're listening to.
I do. I have mine off.
Okay. Well, it's all good here.
Okay. Here we go. Jeff Ellsworth, former mayor of St. Helena, now a member of California League of United Latin American Citizens, the nation's largest Hispanic organization advancing civil rights, sending you a recent 2025 California LULAC Coalition Letter supporting Latino waste workers at Upper Valley Disposal Service Clover Flat landfill with decades of safety and environmental complaints related to fire and wastewater impacts, as well as civil rights complaints. The California LULAC letter is going out broadly seeking support for public hearings on this matter with sworn testimony. I've also presented this matter to the California LULAC State Convention in Los Angeles to delegates at the state and national levels. And Cal LULAC has formed a Napa Valley Waste Worker Advisory Committee that's also looking into other Bay Area facilities with Latino worker fatalities. I recently attended the Upper Valley Waste Management Agency meeting with oversight on UVDS and Clover Flat landfill that Supervisors Cottrell and Manfree sit on. Once again, nothing was done or agendized to deal with this issue. Neighbors' complaints continue to be ignored and nothing is done to provide transparency the community deserves, including ignoring the call for remote meetings the agency could easily afford based on the budget they presented. Napa County, St. Helena, Calistoga, and Yountville continue these problematic waste company contracts without scrutiny and the agency meetings are exercises in greenwashing, talking about what color the recycling bins should be. Instead of the fact that a Latino worker was killed, others, other Latino workers exposed to radiation, dozens of fires, there's an incomplete restoration of the Napa River section contaminated by the landfill, and currently a half billion dollar civil rights lawsuit against the company. All things the community has a right to know, but you'd rather talk about what shade of color the bins should be. Recent water board investigations did not include sworn testimony or interview key witnesses like neighbors of these fire-prone waste sites. By letting this continue, you continue putting the entire county and neighboring counties at high wildfire risk. Do not invite me to call you or lobby you or act as if you are not aware of the situation. You already have all the information needed to make the right decisions. You've had it for years. We had a renewed sense of hope with this new board, just to find the lack of political and moral courage we had with former Supervisor Pedrosa. We recently heard the U.S. Justice Department paused investigations into Clover Flat. No surprise with the current tone of the federal administration attacking civil liberties, making it even more important for California state and local agencies like you to walk the walk on civil rights and racial equity consistent with your own policies and California laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Is there anyone else on the phone?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. That concludes public comment then. Thank you for everyone who participated and we will now move to item nine, where we will open, well, we, we already took, had the opportunity for public comment, but we will ask staff to come to the table or podium. And I believe Supervisor Manfree, you had a question about item 5B?
Yeah. It's a, it's not exactly a question, but.
Or a comment.
Yeah. More of a comment. So item 5B is the continuation of the Ludoar and Scalmonini contract for the Groundwater Sustainability Agency work that they've been doing for quite some time. And I, I pulled this because it's a really big ticket item and I just thought it deserved a little more attention. And my comment is that the GSA was always intended to be self-sustaining. We're five years into the process and I do recognize that we're moving toward that with a plan, planning process for charging for, for well users inside the basin for use, which is just in its, you know, beginning stages right now. So far, the project has been 100% funded through the general fund. Well, maybe not quite 100%, but probably 95% plus, a little bit of contribution from the state. And, and I also see that what we're, what we're doing this year is partly a carryforward from last year because there was a very large allocation made and, and it wasn't all used, which is all fine and good. And I, I just wanted to say that, you know, this is a community where we have every opportunity to succeed in a project like this. We have wonderful partners in the ag community. We have an environmental system that's mostly intact and we have a lot of community support to get this one right. And I really want to see us nail this project in a way that's run through it with this price tag. And as we heard just recently, you know, there are other very worthy causes in the community. You know, a lot of people want that general fund money. So I'm hoping we can, you know, five years in on a 20-year process, get this clicking and, and moving forward. And I'm absolutely here to support that.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. Good morning, Ms. Crosby. Do you want to comment? I have a follow-up question too, so.
I would just really echo Supervisor Manfree's comments. This contract in particular is really critical to carrying the work forward. You all, we're very appreciative that you all made time to come out and observe our interconnected surface water sites. That work would, you know, stop immediately if, if this were not continued. I absolutely, we should have gotten off the general fund already, but that is our number one priority for the next fiscal year and should be in place fairly soon, so.
Thank you. I guess I would say on the flip side, we also know we have stakeholders who are really concerned about the price tag for them. And when everyone is concerned about what our economic resilience looks like as a community and an industry, we've also, as a board, said, hey, let's make sure we're not rushing into over, overcommitting to what, what we're asking of others on this as well. I was in a meeting with stakeholders recently and a question came up on this where one of their pieces of feedback was, gosh, it looks like the budget for the GSA is significantly a majority of consulting fees. And so their question was, is that continuing or do we, do we look for build out of the program based on consulting work early on? And then will we be able to bring more of the work in-house or are we going to be reliant? So anyway, if you could speak to that.
There is a lot of the budget that is dependent on consultant resources. It is not just our plan, but actually something we're implementing already. We're staffing up. We were a one-staff entity for quite some time. Then two, we just recently got a third working on groundwater and he's taking over some of the groundwater monitoring and some of the ISW monitoring work that has been done by consultants in the past. And I'm very fortunate that all of our technical consultants are extremely collaborative and cooperative with each other and also our staff in being willing to say, yes, we're handing that over. handing that over back to the county. So that is our intention, not just our intention, but something we're already putting into action.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I think everyone who went on one of the field trips saw the collaboration between county staff, RCD, and the consultants, so that's great. And so I think going forward to make sure when we have new items on this topic, that we can understand where we are in the process of moving away from that high consultant bill. So Supervisor Ramos, did you have a comment on this item?
This one's, no, that's super old.
Okay, old button, all right. Thank you. So with that, I will bring it back and ask if we have, if we don't have other questions to ask for a motion.
I'll move this to a vote.
All right, there's a motion.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Manfree, second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we will go to our first administrative item that will be item, excuse me, no, we're skipping, we're gonna skip, we're gonna move through, we don't have any administrative items for special district. We will take the administrative items after our public hearing, so we will now be at item 12A, and that is to conduct a public hearing to consider any objections or protests with respect to the proposed, proposed assessment for fiscal year 2025-26. Good morning, Ms. Palmer.
Good morning. Chair Cottrell, Supervisors Jennifer Palmer, Director of Housing and Community Services. I'm here to give just a quick little bit of additional information on the CSA4 assessment because it's such a special thing that Napa does, and it's the one chance I get each year to sort of celebrate this truly unique public-private partnership and a little bit of what is special about our farmworker centers. So just as background, the CSA4 was established in 2002, so we are coming into our 24th year of the assessment, and it was established in, it is, first of all, a public-private partnership where the growers in the valley have elected to self-assess a per-acre assessment for every acre, every parcel that has one acre or more in there. And the funds raised are to provide funding for any public agency, which in this case, obviously, is the county, to develop and operate farmworker centers. Back in 2002, when it was originally proposed and brought forward, it was through partnership with the Napa Valley Vintners, the grape growers, and the Farm Bureau, which is to say, this has been a public-private partnership from the outset. It is renewed every five years, and its current authorization allows for a per-acre assessment of between $10 and $15. The mechanism by which that amount is determined each year is what is before you today. It is the engineer's report. The engineer's report takes a look at what our annual operating budget is going to be for the centers for the coming year, and then does an assessment of all of the parcels in the valley and divides the, the funding necessary, the, the gap funding by those parcels, and that's what sets the assessment. So the current year, right now, our per-acre assessment is $14, and the coming year, it's going to hold at $14. What I want to, well, first of all, the assessment is every five years, the last reauthorization was in 2022. To give you some sense of the amount of sort of collective agreement and support for this, it was reauthorized with 87% of the acres voted in support of the CSA4 assessment. So it's really an overwhelmingly supported initiative in the county. Over the 23 years that we've been having the assessment, more than $10.8 million has been raised, and that is all back into the operations of the centers every year. The, the budget for the centers, about 50% of our annual operating capital is raised through lodger rent. The CSA4 assessment represents about 30% of annual operating capital, and then we get a little bit of a grant from the state every year, and the Cinco de Mayo fundraising tournament provides another significant chunk of funding, so that makes up the last about 15%. The centers provide 180 beds, they operate 11 months out of the year, and that is by state regulation, we can't operate for all 12 months of the year. So each of the centers close, and we stagger when they close in the months of November, December, and January, so that we always have one, if not two, ideally, centers open throughout the year. In addition to the nightly beds, which run at $17 a night for the lodgers, that provides the overnight lodging as well as three hot meal, two hot meals and one to-go lunch. So the centers provide more than 180,000 meals every year. And then, in addition to that, we offer ESL classes, we have health screenings brought directly to the centers, and we have recently started to incorporate housing navigation for the lodgers who have been there to ensure that they are connecting to available, affordable, and permanent housing. Most recently, the Valle Verde project has set aside units for farmworkers, and five of our long-term lodgers from the centers are now full-time residents at Valle Verde, so a very happy transition. So the item today, as I said, starts with the budget, the annual operating budget for the centers, and then an engineer's report is coming to you for adoption of the actual levy of the assessments. I want to say a quick word about the operating budgets for the centers. We run these things on a shoestring. We try to keep costs as low as possible in order to both hold the assessment at the lowest possible rate and also keep from needing to raise the rents too high. $17 a night is a pretty awesome deal for the lodgers who are there when it's factoring in their food. The countercurrents to keeping costs low right now are food costs and utility and garbage. That's what we're dealing with every year. In response to that, the food harvesting program has gotten more and more aggressive. Feeding it forward is a major contributor to our food operation. Happy to say that yesterday, we gleaned the Laanda Festival, and more than 5,000 pounds of food from mostly produce and meat and cheese all went to the three centers yesterday. Three enormous F-150 truck beds filled with produce. So I, I really want to highlight the staff and the creativity, both from our staff internally, Alex Carrasco, who manages the centers, and the center managers themselves for their commitment to doing that kind of creative cost control. And the other partnership that I'm happy to tout is with the folks at Planning, Building, and Environmental Services. There's a, a team there that is helping us pursue grant funding for electrification and, and greener replacement of appliances and that kind of thing, so looking into heat pumps rather than HVAC systems, and making sure that as we're bringing in new appliances, that they are the lowest energy consumption available. And it's a, it's a complex statewide set of grants and opportunities there, and we're really thrilled to have the technical expertise of folks inside PBS helping us navigate that. And so with that, I want to say that the action before you is to adopt the resolution levying the assessments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. You mentioned long-term lodgers. What, tell us a little bit about how long a typical lodger is going to return to the farmworker housing center, and it's great to hear that you've found spaces, permanent spaces for five of them.
Yeah, but that's a great question. So for context, it's 180 beds, and we serve right around 300 lodgers over the course of the 11 months that they're open. So we do have some folks who stay for basically the entire season, they come back in January, they are here until November or December, and then the other 50% probably are really using it as kind of gap housing, where they're coming in for a shorter period of time. But since, over the 20 years that the CSA4 assessment has been going on, the centers originally were truly nightly migrant labor housing, so they were full four months out of the year, and then the rest of the time, there was a, a pretty good churn through there. That's really no longer the case. Folks are working here 11, even 12 months out of the year, and what we're finding is we used to be able to close two centers at a time and leave one open over the November-December time period. We have switched to rotating, there's only one that's closed in November 1 and December 1 and January because we have so many folks who need housing 12 months out of the year. As our farmworker housing needs assessment last year showed, there are families that are living in the Central Valley, and the labor is commuting here and, and working during the week and then trying to get home back on the weekends to their family. And so the long-term nature is that they're already, they're, they're supporting a fully established household with children back in the Central Valley, and so the ability to access a bed that is just $17 a night here is really how they're making the math work, and it's keeping from having to otherwise sleep in a car. So, and this is, to say this is why we're introducing housing navigation into the centers is we do want to help folks, the intent of the center was never that they would be long-term, transitional, or permanent housing. The intent was that it was filling the nightly gap and keeping people out of their cars, and we want to make sure that the centers are getting back to that. So they run full 10 months out of the year, which is great from an operating standpoint. So I sit here with the economics, like, we need people sleeping in those beds in order to make the math work, but we also know that there's a labor force of 7,000 to 9,000 here at any given time, and this is only 180 beds. So the more that we can help folks who are, who need housing here, bring their families from the Central Valley and access housing that is affordable here, the more that we can make those beds available to the folks who are truly just needing nightly lodging.
Yeah, thank you for that. That is really helpful. Supervisor Alessio has a question or comment.
Just really quick, really impressed with the, you know, I've been following this since it started, farmworker housing, and, and thank you for this report and the oral report to follow. I've been seeing a lot more women in the workforce out in the vineyards, and I'm wondering, is there unique or special housing for women, or is it just co-ed, the farm housing? And again, bringing up the families, the families of farmworkers, you know, we want to try to keep families here, keep the community intact, keep parents connected to their children, and so I really appreciate the housing navigation in terms of affordable housing, and also, of course, keep those tax dollars here, too. But can you expand anything on, on the change of the workforce over this, over this time?
Yes. So one of the things our needs assessment showed is that between 20% to 30% of the current workforce here is female, and that's a pretty recent change. The centers were historically, they have always been, single unaccompanied male. There's no reason that needs to be the case, that's just how they were designed. So there are some logistical things that we need to assess if we're going to make them co-ed, and this is an item that's actually coming before the Housing Commission to begin the process of looking at what do we need to do as far as, like bathrooms? They just, we don't have the right facilities to make them co-ed at this moment, but we know that's the direction they need to move in, and there's no reason we can't operate them. And then for families, the, the data from the farmworker needs assessment overwhelmingly points to the fact that most of the folks who are working here are parents, and so what we want and what we're trying to echo as much as possible is that family farmworker housing is just family housing, and it's just housing that is affordable. So we, what we don't want to advocate for is sort of family congregate or dedicated housing, what that, that supply is just making sure that we have enough of housing that is affordable to families, and most of our farmworkers are making between 70% to 80% of area median income, so that's the income bracket that we want to be thinking about for that, which is also true of a lot of the workforce in the hospitality industry. So just affordable housing is where we're solving that.
Thank you. If I can just follow up real quick. Are we working with the city of Napa on this? Just because I know the city has some areas that, you know, and thank you for bringing up Valle Verde and the history, you didn't really mention the history of that. I will tell you that there was a, it was one of those kind of off-subject, but back to Valle Verde, and the value it brings back to us is that, that has a long history where sequel lawsuits were, entangled it and closed previous projects for over a decade until it was able to come back with a new vision, and actually a better vision. So I appreciate that. But the city of Napa also has a couple parcels, one in particular that comes to mind, surrounded across the Vintage High School on the corner of Trower and Jefferson, that is going to be deed-restricted for a low income. Have you talked with the city of Napa about maybe doing a partnership here for some of these families?
So the funding source that was used in Valle Verde to set aside units for family, for farmworker housing is a state funding source called the Joe Serna Fund. Burbank was successful in competing and received an $8 million grant, and that translated to 29 units of set-aside housing. So that is where city and county is collaborating to support the developers with applying for those funds. In the most recent round of Serna funding, the applications were just due last month, Monarch, the Sandpiper Project, and I believe the Methodist Church all applied for Joe Serna funding. So our challenge is that, like everything right now, it's incredibly competitive, but Burbank, the award for Valle Verde was the first time any project in Napa had applied for Serna funding, and that's now just become a requirement for all of our developers, that they, they are seeking that. The project where we are looking to have the most units of set-aside farmworker housing is going to be at the Sandpiper Project, which is the affordable housing development that is going down near the Costco, that's going to be an 88 unit, and we're working, that is a county project, and we're working to, the intent is, as much as 50% of those units would be set aside through the Serna application.
Thank you, that's very helpful, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Oh, I do need to take, is there any public comment on this item? Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. Anyone on the phones? Okay, I will go ahead and honor that motion from Supervisor Alessio. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Supervisor Alessio, second by Supervisor Manfree. Before I call for the vote, I just want to say thank you again to Ms. Palmer for the work that you did on that farmworker housing needs assessment. We saw the crop report come before us from our ag commissioner a couple weeks ago, and they, they featured a lot of the data that, that your team gathered in that report. So that, that report is living on, which I think is really important, and helping the community understand our farmworker housing needs, so. Thank you. With that, I will ask all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
So before we move on to the next one, I think, I'm going to ask to take a comfort break, but I, I first want to take a poll of folks in the audience. I think we have a lot of people here for 11B. That is the discussion of the MUSL program and the Lake Bariessa concessions. Can I get a show of hands of the audience who's here for that? Yeah, so that's a lot of, of the public we have in the room. So I am going to switch our calendar and take that as our next item. Let's take a 10-minute break, and then come, why don't we come back here at 10:30, an eight-minute break? Thank you very much. All right. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
It is one active day here at the Board of Supervisors. So, I'm going to bring the meeting back to order here and give us a little forecast of where we're going. We are now going to hear item 11B, which will be a status update on Lake Berriessa Concessions and the new Mussels Program. Then, we will have item, an item where we will hear about our new plan for our reentry facility. And then, we will move to item...
This is administration.
11D, hot mic. And then, we will move to item D, the facility's master plan. So, that is the game plan running on out. So, at this point, I will welcome Director Letterer, Ms. Sharp, to the, Ms. Sears, to the, to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Control, members of the board, Steve Letterer, Public Works Director. I was actually going to make a joke that this was Lee Sears and if you confuse her with Lee Sharp, you need to put a dollar into the coffee, into the coffee fund. Later, we'll have an item where Lee Sharp will be here and you need to not confuse her with Lee Sears. But, so, getting back to where we are. Yes, thank you very much. We are here to talk about Lake Berriessa and the resorts this morning. I have already introduced Lee Sears, who is our Lake Berriessa Resort Program Manager. I'd also like to introduce Tim Wilkins, representing Margaritaville and the potential developer at Steel Canyon. And Chris Silk, our district engineer for Napa Berriessa Report Resort Improvement District. The water, wastewater system up there is also with us today in case any of the questions go in that direction. Our goal today is to provide the board an update on the four resorts that the county has responsibility for under the Managing Partnership Agreement, the MPA, with the Bureau of Reclamation, BOR. I'm going to try and keep the acronyms at least defined here. So, Lee is going to give us an update on the status of the four resorts. She'll also give the board an update on the status of the Mussels Program up there. There's been a lot of discussion about that and the board had asked for that update. As I mentioned, Tim Wilkins is here to give a brief update on, on his development team. We'll obviously receive some public comment at time appropriate for the chair. Ultimately, the only action we're asking for the board to take is to approve a five-month month extension of the exclusive negotiating agreement, or ENA, between the county and, and the Margaritaville, the Tim Wilkins Group. And that five months is requested because there were some federally related delays in the process. So, we would like to give the development team that time back to continue their work. And then, I'm going to close with a couple of, a couple of items we're dealing with the BOR on and just to give the board an update on that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lee, who's going to, as I said, give an update on the four resorts and the Mussels Program.
Good morning, everyone. So, the four sites we have available right now that we're, that are in development, that are under the total scope of different sites with the BOR is Steel Canyon and Berriessa Point and Monticello and Spanish Flat. And Steel Canyon is being operated by an interim concession, but it is under an ENA agreement with Camp Margaritaville and Tim Wilkins. Berriessa Point is, I have a couple of private companies looking at it for potential marina facilities only at that site. That would include over maybe 300 slips in totality, but it would be probably done sort of in increments. It would have fuel station and marina office. I'm working on trying to get them in an ENA agreement sometime in the next 30 to 60 days. For Monticello Shores, I have a multinational and international company that would do a joint venture that is looking at the site as well for a resort, a full-service resort. And we're just in the process right now of discussing what they might do, what they would want to do, and hopefully would, would maybe in the next 60 to 90 days, get them in an ENA agreement as well. Spanish Flat, right now, is operated as an interim agreement and I'm leaving it as it is right now. I'm not sort of sending it out for open bid or taking any projects that would offer it up for development. It's staying, it's sort of a small mom-and-pop operation and it's on a interim concession agreement as well.
We can go on?
Let me talk about the...
Why don't we have Lee also talk about the Mussels Program and then we're, of course, available to answer any questions?
Sounds great. Yes. So, the Mussels Program is a program that is between the Bureau of Reclamation and Solano County Water District. And in October of last year, they found these golden mussels in the Delta area. And they're extremely invasive, more so than the Quagga and the zebra mussels. And so, in November... And so in November, the BOR and Solano County met and decided that they needed to really implement a mussel program for Lake Bariessa that was real in line with Lake Tahoe's sort of mussel program, same thing. And it's sort of the gold star of programs that would, you would want to implement. And so they put in place, I think around November 15th, the mussel program, which includes decontamination. And there are three decontamination sites up at the lake right now. They're all on Fed sites, and that usually takes 30 to 90 minutes for any sort of watercraft vehicle to be decontaminated. They also have a quarantine program that you could quarantine your boat for 30 days, and it's tagged. And then they have a tagging program for any boat that's launched on the lake in and out. And it's, it's a program that, that Solano County has that sets each tag as numbered in, in a system. So they're able to track the boat, they're able to track where it goes, where it's tagged, where it's coming from, so that they can keep these mussels out of Lake Bariessa. And so far, it's gone quite well. We haven't had too many issues. A lot of the sites have had some boats that show up that don't know about the program. It's one of those things where it's more marketing for the BOR in Solano County to get this information out there for boaters to understand that they have to either be quarantined, decontaminated, or tagged to launch at Lake Bariessa.
Got it, thank you. So I think at this point, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment, and then I will bring it back to the board for questions and discussion. So, good morning.
Good morning. Hey, this is really nice to see this female Board of Supervisors. Congratulations, I'm excited. Also impressed with the scope of the work that you're undertaking. And the, just, I'm always very proud of Napa County. I have to say, I tell everybody that I love Napa everywhere I go. And it's not just because it's, it is what it is, but the politics of Napa and the concerns and the heartfelt concerns. I was just listening when you were talking about community, and I was thinking, you know, the work that, that's been done. Lee Sears has been, made herself available. I live up in Lake Bariessa. I am actually the president of the Lakeview Estates Landowner Association.
And could you just state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say my name. Roseanne Di Moro, D-E capital M-O-R-O. And I've been in public life like forever, so I have a full appreciation for what you do. So everybody up there, I'd say 90% of the people at least, obviously support the resorts. And we're really excited about the fact that you chose Margaritaville because the environmental, I'm, I'm an environmentalist. I belong to the Sierra Club, Friends of the Earth, you know, all the right things, and believe in the right things. But I've studied this, so I, I did a, I, when this came in and we heard about it, I did, I put, you know, these Google searches where you can get information every day about what you care about. And two of them are Lake Bariessa, and one, one is Lake Bariessa, and the other is Camp Margaritaville and Margaritaville. Because I wanted to see what was going on nationally in terms of any kind of environmental complaints or whatever. And I was really astounded and appreciative of the fact that, I mean, this, this company, I think because Jimmy Buffett is probably, is, was an environmentalist, I think they started with the right principles. And so I appreciate very much you choosing that as the site for Steel Canyon. The other thing that, that came in, it's on Lake Bariessa. And what happened was, every day, there's something on Lake Bariessa, and a lot of it is obituaries. I hate to say that. People mentioning in their obituaries that how their life was impacted with their family, and their community, and their friends, and their children by recreation on that lake. And I was thinking, how sad it is that we've waited this long for this to be developed by a really good developer. So I'm really excited and appreciate the fact that you've chosen them. And I, and I can tell you, you know, as, you know, leader in, up in that area, I will do everything, and we will do everything we can to assist the board. Appreciating, you know, also appreciating, I've also built a house, so I know how torturous Napa County can be on standards. And, but I do appreciate that. And so for protecting kind of the environment, choosing the right resort, making your staff very accessible to us, thank you, Lee. I just wanted to come here, thank you, and support, you know, the extension, obviously, because they didn't have a choice in that matter. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Ms. Moro. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, Jeffrey Lake. I was the Vice President of the Senior Center at Lake Bariessa from 2019 to 2020. The only reason I stopped being the Vice President was because of the fire and my house burned. What I learned from the residents was everybody is waiting for a resort to happen up there. And I got to know the entire community during my term as Vice President. And this will provide jobs for the young. There's nothing for them to do as far as work. Most of them just do weed eating or things like that. And I know that all the businesses up there were impacted by having no resorts, and everyone was struggling. So I completely support that a resort is up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Other public comment? Mr. Dowdy, did you want to speak now?
Tim Downey, thank you, Chair Cottrell, for your earlier guidance. Just to say, I am an ardent enthusiastic supporter of the Lake Bariessa, Lake Bariessa Revitalization Program. Mr. Wilkins, thank you very much for your efforts. And to thank the board and the Napa Bariessa Resort Improvement District for your extensive past works in evaluating these, and ongoing efforts to bring a qualified concessionaire like Margaritaville to operate at Lake Bariessa. Such a concession would provide far-reaching social and economic benefits to Napa County and the Bay Area, and much-needed economic boost to the Lake Bariessa region. Obviously, there's a lot of work to be done. Raising my hand to help in progress that vision, if asked. Thank you again to the board and the district for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdy, and thanks for your patience here. Anyone else who wants to speak on this item?
If there isn't anyone else, this might be a good time to invite Mr. Wilkins to present
A few more comments.
After, after the public comment.
Thank you very much, Board. My name is Paul Gallagher, active member in the Monticello Ski Club, also sponsor for Cast for Kids, and want to thank Lee for all of her help with that two years ago. I think that the concessions moving forward, especially with Margaritaville, are very important socially and economically, not only for Napa County, but all the surrounding counties. I mean, people come to Napa County not only in limos or jets, but middle America to use recreational facilities. And by closing Lake Bariessa 20-plus years ago, we've lost that opportunity. The user days, I think, are down to 25% of what they used to be. I think it's one of the nicest lakes in, in California. I've done resort development up at Lake Tahoe. I know what it takes to do a resort, and very much in favor of seeing Lake Bariessa redeveloped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Anyone else in the room? Come on up. And Ms. Hoskins, do we have anyone on the phones at this point? Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Thanks for giving the opportunity to speak. My name is Frank Hock. I've been a visitor to Lake Bariessa for almost 67 years. My first experience up here was in 1958 with my father when I was four weeks old. So we have a lot of memories over the years. High school, I came up here camping with my friends, and we recently, and actually not recently, but we bought a house in the Highlands area. Number of years ago, I've retired, and we spend quite a bit of time out on the lake, volunteer for all kinds of activities, and we would like to see some development of the lake. We've seen two false starts so far since Sabero shut the lake down, and we're very hopeful that Margaritaville is going to do something positive. And Lee, thank you for your efforts. If we can get the lake developing again, I think we'd see a great economic boom back in the valley. I remember back in the 80s, I would ride my motorcycle up here and have breakfast at, at the Corners. We would wait 45 minutes to an hour for breakfast at 10 o'clock in the morning. Part of the thrill. The economy of the valley up there is, is poor. I've, I know we had probably 200-plus businesses related to Lake Bariessa about 20, 30 years ago. I think we're probably down to about 20 to 25 businesses now. So we need the economic boom to come back to Lake Bariessa with resort development, and I encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hock. Any other comments? Okay, then I will go ahead and ask Mr. Wilkins if he would like to come speak.
Thank you. It's, it's a great opportunity to be able to come here and give you guys an update on what we've been doing specifically. As you guys know, the people that are involved in the development of this project are mostly local people. I've been in Napa for 28 years. I was the original developer of the Meritage, and that, this will be our fourth resort project in the Napa Valley. To give you a brief summary of what's happened, in November of '23, we signed the agreement with the county to take on the concession. We completed our due diligence in April of 19, 2024, two months ahead of schedule. We completed the entire design of the site plan on the resort in October of '24. We completed our ALTA survey based on the Bureau's meets and bounds descriptions. And we're, unfortunately, we learned in November of 2024 that the size of the concession area was much different than what we originally started with, is quite a bit larger. So we had to redo our resort program guidelines in March of this year. The redesign of the resort commenced about two months ago. And we met with the feds about discussing a longer-term concession agreement. When you increase the size and the acreage and the infrastructure and the cost, it's going to be more expensive to build it. So we needed a greater period of time to get the financing. The current ground lease would only allow us to have 48 years of use under the ground lease. And the, and the Bureau has agreed to extend the concession agreement, so we're very happy about that. That's great news. This resort is not going to be an oberrage or a high-end resort, it's a family-oriented resort. There's, you know, with the additional acreage, we're actually looking at putting a huge amount of employee housing on the site, maybe as many as 100 units for employees. Nobody else has ever done that in the history of the Napa Valley. The resort will include a water park, zip lines, a lazy river, a teen center, a kid's center, four restaurants. And we'll be making a full public presentation this fall and getting, you know, feedback from the community. As soon as the site plan is done in the next few months, we'll begin work on the final EIR, the expansion of the sewer and water supply, which we've already done a preliminary report confirming that that's feasible. We'll be doing our utility analysis, our public report with the Department of Real Estate, and all the pre-construction work such as soils reports and technical studies. JLL is the lender doing the financing on the resort. And I'm pleased to say that overall, even with the delay on the feds, we are ahead of schedule from what was contemplated in our original agreement. And we feel very excited about the project and the support we've received. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Are there questions for my colleagues? Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to say thank you. I know this is, it feels like it's the longest, greatest anticipation moving forward. As someone who grew up going to the lake and lived up on the north side of it, and, and I find myself with these very historic references as I get on the lake and I take tours out with our sheriff's department to say like, oh, those, those foundations, that was, right? There's a lot of history there, and I really appreciate the, the efforts. I think that, I will start off by saying that I think it makes sense to extend this exclusive negotiating period because we are on the right track. There are a few things that I was, I was hoping that I could probably buy more than, than comment than question, but if you have something to say, things that I think are incredibly important to consider, you know, you, you've heard there used to be a lot of businesses that were supporting the lake activity. And it seems like everyone, that every business that is up there right now is, is really hanging on to a very last hope that this is going to be successful. But there's been a change in, in the way that the lake activity has, has moved around. And then there has also been a lot of devastation through fires. And so one of the things that is incredibly important when we look at policing and safety out in, in the lake, I, I'd love to know if you have any plans that you can share with us at this time of how you plan to enhance the safety around, not just in mobility, but also in patrolling around the, the lake.
Yeah, I should have brought up and mentioned, we have actually come to an agreement with the county sheriff's department to install their substation on the property towards the entrance, as well as other EMT facilities. And we've also been working with several fire consultants, and we've talked about making part of the resort an evacuation center for the Highland residents in the, of a major wildfire.
Thank you, I, I appreciate you sharing that. I think that's incredibly important to, to know that those types of concerns are going to be integrated into whatever program you have. In terms of mobility and, you know, Steel Canyon, one way in, one way, one way out. And what do you foresee as, as, as how you might be addressing that in the plans?
We've, we've hired W Transportation as our, as our traffic consultants, and they'll be doing a thorough review of that entire situation as part of our EIR. And so it might turn out that we have to put, we have to put in a center lane, a third lane in the center of the property to kind of alleviate any backup or traffic congestion. And we're, we're prepared to do that, that's in our budget.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Supervisor Alessio, and then Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for being here. And, and Lee, and also our Public Works Director, Steve Letter, for, for this presentation. This is really, it was motivated by the question about the invasive mussels. And, and so I want to go back to that really quick. I didn't see the report that any have been identified, which is a great thing, if I'm understanding correctly. Have we identified any of the yellow mussels?
Actually, there were some found on a houseboat at Pleasure Cove, but they did not let it launch. I think they came over there to launch, and they were dead, already on there. But they did find it, but other than that, none, none have been detected.
Great, and I appreciate that we're being proactive and, and following a best practice. As you say, the golden star of Lake Tahoe. So thank you for that. I too, as a, you know, fourth-generation Napa, spent my childhood at Lake Bariessa. We didn't have, we didn't have a speedboat or skiing, we fished. So I remember going and getting, you know, fish bait, the minnows, and going out there in a little fishing boat or on the shore and fishing up there. But it used to be such a vibrant area. And, you know, this reminds me a lot, Mr. Wilkins, and I thank you for this, not only because you're part of this community, you understand this community, and you're collaborating and working so closely with this community, that this is, in some ways, if you will, similar to what the social and economic boost that the flood project gave to downtown Napa. Downtown Napa was a ghost town. It needed a path, it needed a way for it to be a place, for it to be viable, for the community to be embraced by community, to be that economic boost that now presents, brings the city of Napa over $30 million a year, just in TOT, not to mention sales tax. So, which goes back, it's not held by the government, it's given to the public by the government through those economic engine. And just the, the sense of community up there. I know there used to be a lot of, a lot more people up there, but they've had to leave. And the comment made about the younger generation and having viable, you know, careers up there. And the housing, that's huge, thank you so much. Because we have talked about incorporating housing with development, workforce housing with development for a long time. And you are breaking the barrier on that in a big way up there. So I just see so many attributes to this project. I'm also excited to see it, you know, see it in its lived, real form. This is not an easy project. It's probably, I would imagine, maybe the most challenging project you've taken on. I would only assume so, just based on all the environmental and all those aspects that you have to go through, through the county and the state. But yeah, just thank you for this, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Gallagher.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wilkins. And I, just to piggyback on Supervisor Alessio, I was just curious about if you had more information about your plans to do workforce housing. That's really wonderful, and I'm sure adds a whole new dimension to the project. But as you plan, be, I think, of great interest to this board to hear more and more about your plans for that.
Yeah, the southern part of the property, there's a large area that wasn't used previously that became part of the boundary. And we've done our preliminary site planning, and we figure we could do at least 100 units of employee housing on that property. And it, it not only benefits people working there, but it'll also help with congestion. The part of the benefit is some of those employees that work there will be allowed to use that housing as part of their compensation. So they're not having to pay rent for it, it's actually a benefit of their employment. And the, the project is projected to provide over $40 million of TOT revenue to the county per year. So it's also a huge stimulus financially.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's a good, a good model and, um, thank you for bringing us up.
Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you. Um, this is really helpful, uh, information and I appreciate everyone being here today to share it. Uh, I'm curious about the phasing for the construction and which components of this project you're anticipating building first, second, third, you know, and so on and so forth. I have a couple other questions, but I think we better do this one at a time.
Yeah, the, the project will be done in about five phases. The first phase will involve most of the infrastructure. And, um, the, the public presentation that we'll have this fall will have more specific information about the, uh, the phasing. A lot of financial analysis has to go into that and until we have the site plan finalized, we can't really finalize our construction cost. And then we'll be able to figure out, you know, how it works from a phasing standpoint.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, um, as much as you know at this point, what's, what are the anticipated use numbers like, um, seasonally and then also annually?
It's, it's, it's going to be geared towards a year-round resort. During the off-season, we know that we will be full on the weekends, but during the, um, the weekday, we're going to be putting in almost ten thousand square feet of meeting space and we hope to host a lot of small groups up there.
Okay. And then, um, as far as the employee housing, which again is a really wonderful model to see, we definitely need more of that everywhere in the community. Um, what, I mean, a hundred units of housing, I'm thinking this is probably two to three hundred people adding to the lake community who are going to be there full-time. And, um, and tell me if I'm wrong in my spitballing on that one, but, uh, what kind of services do you anticipate, uh, would support a community of that size being added to the area, specifically with, you know, fire readiness and preparedness, uh, electric vehicle charging, because the state of California is still on track to be rolling out, uh, a big increase in the number of electric vehicles. And, you know, for a remote location like that, I don't know if that means a microgrid or a new substation or what, but that's a pretty substantial lift, um, to try to keep pace with what the state's goals are for transportation systems. And then, of course, just grocery shopping, like are there going to be amenities enough to support those people not having to commute really far just for the basics and healthcare, things like that?
In, in the core of our, uh, property, we actually have a full market that's going to be there, so people can buy groceries, not only guests, but the public will have access to that as well as the four restaurants in the resort. So there'll be day use by the public of a lot of the facilities, so, um, you know, the other benefit too, which I didn't mention, is that we're having to spend a substantial amount of money to upgrade the sewer and water facilities. And those improvements, which are going to be over ten million dollars, will benefit all the residents up there and prevent the county from having to keep coming in and doing temporary fixes.
I think that was it for my, uh, my questions. Thank you.
Thank you for all the questions. Uh, one follow-up I had, first of all, to say thank you, you and I met several months ago in St. Helena to just chat about the scope of the project. I think this is before you knew about the expanded boundary, so.
Correct.
Um, thank you for being here with this update. One of the things we had talked about at that point too was the, um, the notion of some, of a public lakeside trail, that I think that that's been long an interest of residents and I would imagine it would be an amenity to the resort too.
Yeah, yes, on the northern part of the property that's all new, there's actually existing trails that we're going to be expanding and using, and those will be available both to the public and the guests.
Okay, great. And so it, will the trail continue around the boundary of the lake?
I, I don't have a, a map with me, but if you go up to where the, the residences are up towards the northern part of the lake.
Yeah.
Um, there'll be an access from there onto the trails, which will go all the way around the lake and then down towards the property. And then we're, we're actually putting in some zip line courses, I'll end right where the zip line courses go.
Got it. So I will just continue to communicate my interest in seeing as much, uh, public lakeside trail access as, as we can get out there.
Right.
So, thank you very much. And I, just to echo the, um, interest in the workforce housing, I think that's a great, um, new element. And, you know, I will say, the public comment that I've received on this project is by it, by and large, very positive. If there is a concern, I think it's around fire. So I appreciate the questions about emergency response and, uh, wildfire readiness out there.
In working with Lee too, we also understand that we might be, uh, paying for upgrading the Capel Fire Station, so we're, and we have a full-time fire consultant that's working on the project, so we're.
Great. Thank you. It's really great to get these, um, these status updates, so.
Great.
Um, so with that, I will bring it back to the board. If there are not further questions, I will ask for a motion.
Thank you.
If I, if I could just make a couple of comments before you.
Oh, sure.
Um, I just want to follow, one, uh, comment we've heard from the community, um, in the past is, is about traffic, um, on Steel Canyon because, because of the location of the, uh, the front entrance gate, when it's busy, the, uh, traffic will sometimes back up onto the, onto the public roadway while they're waiting to get in. So, um, actually to, to make clear, the board's not approving any specific design today, but one of the things we'll be looking for is, um, some way of, of either multiple gates or the gates being further back so that there's the, while people are waiting to get into the resort, they don't back up onto the public road and that should resolve that, um, uh, public comment, if you will, or, or concern that we've heard from residents of the Highlands. I also just wanted to mention, um, the length of the management partnership agreement, the MPA, uh, which was a fifty-five-year agreement signed between the BOR, uh, and the county. We're now in year four of that, give or, give or take. And it's going to take some time, um, for the resort to develop, which ends up leaving, um, fifty years sounds like a long time, but actually a relatively short time of, of operation to amortize the, the major investments that any developer is going to have to make, um, on this project. So we have engaged the BOR to ask if that, uh, contract can be extended and we've received some positive feedback, um, although we don't have a final answer on that. And I, I will just mention that we've been told with the, um, by the couple of BOR staff that we've been dealing with, that their office has been decimated by staff cuts. So it, it's very difficult to say when we're going to get that final feedback. Uh, we have been working with Congressman Thompson, um, and his office to, um, try and push this issue along at the, you know, at the Washington level. And, um, we will continue to pursue that issue. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So is there a motion to approve the extension of the ENA?
I'll make an, um, motion to approve and authorize amendment number one to agreement number eight-six-seven-one-B with Y-Tim Napa LLC in conjunction with Camp Margarita Ville Resorts.
A second?
All right. A motion by Supervisor Ramos, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came to provide a comment this morning too. So at this point, we will move to, looking at my notes here. Thank you. We're going to move to item eleven C. We're going to receive a presentation on a new capital improvement project and related budget amendments. And we have a correction item on this one. And, um, what, what I want to manage expectations here on the board, I would like us to get through this item and then our facilities master plan before we break for lunch. So hopefully that works for everyone. Good morning, Ms. Craig and Ms. Yasamoto.
Okay, so I have, uh, there's a PowerPoint here and every board member should have a copy, a hard copy and also a map to go along, so. Uh, good morning. Jennifer Yasamoto, Health and Human Services Agency Director, and I'm joined here by?
Becky Craig, Assistant Chief Executive Officer.
And I didn't know, Ryan, you wanted to say any opening comments?
Sure. Uh, thank you. I appreciate that, Jennifer. Madam Chairman, members of the board, this, this item, uh, although it reads a little bit complicated on the agenda, it's a series of accounting, um, procedures, uh, but really the heart of this item is a, um, really, um, I think demonstrates the leadership of, of your board in finding, uh, resolving a problem that has been our re-entry facility, which has sat empty for, uh, some time. Uh, there are good reasons behind that and finding a, um, ultimately a, uh, getting that, uh, purchasing that facility for a different use and then setting it up for, uh, what you're going to hear today, uh, from our Director of HHSA. With that, I'm going to hand it back over.
Okay, great. If I can pull up the next slide, please? Oh, I do have the remote. Or I can do it. Let's see. Okay. All right. So pretty brief overview, we're gonna, um, make the somewhat, as Ryan said, sometimes complicated, not complicated. So I've got five slides, we're going to go through background, facility overview, the programs and services that we've envisioned for the new use, next steps to operationalizing, and then we will close up and wrap up. So as Ryan said, if I can get this to work. Oh, okay, there we go. All right. So the re-entry facility, as your board knows, located at twenty-two-hundred, uh, Napa Highway, um, has been in sort of the, the county's, um, array of real estate for quite a bit. In two thousand twenty-four, so last year, um, HHSA proposed repurposing the re-entry facility into a behavioral health treatment center. And as Ryan said, this is a unique opportunity. It is a facility that's unlike any facility within the county's real estate. It's unique, it's existing, and it accomplishes a really critical goal at this time, as you know, from the entire state of California and maybe the entire country, the need to create behavioral health infrastructure to not only sustain the programs that Health and Human Services operates, but also to expand. And I know that at prior board meetings, uh, Supervisor Ramos has commented on the CSEC, uh, unfunded mandate report that was issued, and there are a lot of mandates in there. Um, and there are mandates that counties across the state, including Napa County, are striving to implement. This is the solution in part to some of that. The challenge here is the facility is legally restricted as a re-entry facility, and that is due to the nature of the SB twenty-two, ten-twenty-two bonds that were used to finance that. And that has been a, a long journey. Over the last ten months since two thousand twenty-four, and I will say this is probably August of two thousand twenty-four, um, approach to the county around the possibility of converting the use, it's been complicated. One of the first tasks that we underwent was to work with Public Works to get the original architect or firm who developed the re-entry center and designed it, to work with them to determine how we might envision it. It is a large piece of property and how can we, here in Napa County, put it to its best use? There has been, and I'm not going to go into all the gory details, a lot of due diligence to figure out how we could pave both the legal and the funding alternatives to remove the restriction. Ultimately, as it set forth in the board agenda letter, the county did defees the bond. That literally just lifts up all the restrictions, unlocking what was previously locked down for very prescribed use and paves the way for the county to do something really innovative with that property. And for us, that is the Behavioral Health Treatment Center project. And today, as Ryan mentioned, there's about six actions in your, uh, board agenda letter related to the budget amendments that need to happen to make the financing behind the scenes work and to then open up the CIP for the facility modifications that are going to be needed to carry out the vision that we see. So if you turn now to, I don't know, there we go. Okay, so there's a lot on this, which is why you have a separate document, so you don't have to strain your eyes too much. So this is an overview of what is currently the re-entry facility. And in it, and this is with, uh, Nocton Lewis working with us to reconfigure how we can make the best use of the property as configured. So you'll see there, the map is color-coded, um, and I'm going to try to walk you through what all those color coatings are. So at the very top, that is what we would envision using as residential treatment and withdrawal management. So you can see that lighter peach is the residential and the darker would be the withdrawal management program. And that, those are programs currently in existence that operate on the grounds of Napa State Hospital. So this project will allow us to move over to this pretty much brand-new facility, um, a treatment program that is extremely important and critical and to provide a really nice therapeutic lovely space for people who are in current treatment and recovery. As, uh, your board knows, the, uh, we are grateful for the use of the Napa State Hospital buildings and it takes an awful lot to make them habitable and workable. On any given moment, we are cobbling together with four agencies, uh, making various repairs. So this really is a longer-term infrastructure solution so that we can ensure that we can keep these programs operational for our community's benefit. If you look now at the blue section, that's right there near the bottom part of the facility, that will become our SB forty-three LPS facility. And as your board knows, this is a requirement and a mandate that has been issued to counties. It becomes effective for Napa County January one of two thousand twenty-six. Your board did make a resolution to defer that, understanding that mandates come and the ecosystem is not there and the system just isn't built out from a regulatory standpoint, a funding standpoint, or literally the facilities of which there are none in the state of California. The green section moving there is, we are envisioning a sobering center. And you can see the entry to the sobering center is off to the left side there. You can also see the entry to the SB forty-three designated facility near the bottom. And then if you also look toward the, I'll move on to the yellow. The yellow is really an extension of the entry lobby into the residential treatment withdrawal management, kind of near the driveway on the bottom left. And the rest of it is group and programming space that's needed for the residential treatment and withdrawal management program. And then the gray parts are the kitchen and dining area and other sort of maintenance-related, uh, space that supports the operations and will support the operation of all the three programs. So we're really making maximum usage of shared space by then having three programs that can support and jointly use that shared space. And if you can see there, there's, um, it's sort of a green, it's intended to look like a bush, um, that creates a dividing section within the property to accommodate, um, the male-female sections of the facility. And then also, the architects have envisioned sort of breaking up that darker peach, um, building into withdrawal management that would have both the male and female sections of that. Next slide. Clearly I need help with that. Okay, so this is again, sort of in, in combination with the map. You've got this facility, it's over twenty-one thousand square feet, and so it is quite large. We're maximizing use of the space, we're creating three distinct areas. And those are the distinct areas I walked you through on the map. Um, again, currently leasing on Napa State Hospital grounds, we're investing in the long-term programming. And the residential treatment expansion, so we'll actually be moving from a capacity of thirty-eight total beds to, up to fifty-eight. That helps us build the capacity that we need and also helps us meet a different mandate, which is the Prop thirty-six mandate, which went into effect this January for treatment-mandated felonies. The SB forty-three facility, again, that is possibly going to be licensed as a mental health rehabilitation center, but there are other license types as well, so we'll be working with the state, um, and stakeholders to determine the licensure type that gives us, quite frankly, the most flexibility. The SB forty-three mandate, as your board knows, is the most significant change to LPS conservatorship laws in fifty years. Um, it expands grave disability to include severe substance use of orders and also co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders. So this readies our county for meeting that. And then sobering center, extremely important in our continuing to support diversion and not having individuals who really need treatment hit the emergency department, also providing a place for law enforcement. Instead of jail and EDs, it will be the sobering center. It's a point, as your board knows, we are continually engaged in early intervention. How can we engage people, provide them the supports they need at the earliest possible point and either engage them into referral pathways that will then be right there on-site and/or to community resources, because not everybody's necessarily ready at that point in time. So this provides us with that opportunity that we don't currently have. And this is a newly reimbursable benefit under CAL-AME. So that's the Medi-Cal transformation that is underway and it's about fifty different things, and this is one of the fifty things that it is. and this is one of the 50 things that it is. So we fully intend to, again, engage in the best practices and try to develop the ecosystem that the state is envisioning. And your board has made significant investments in treatment and infrastructure, in early intervention, in contracts that you even heard about today when Deputy Director Kador talked about the investments made that directly relate to even elder abuse. So the swath and breadth and scope of what your board and counties take on is significant. And I think it's, oftentimes it happens in the background, and it's not seen and heard about, but this is a significant re-envisioning of a property that I don't know if our county will ever see the likes of a facility like this again. So really being able to marry the real estate that we have with meeting the current moment and the needs that we have, and as your board knows, when you look at that CSSEC unfunded mandates, a lion's share fall within Health and Human Services and a lion's share fall within behavioral health. And next slide. So that was the last 10 months or so. The next steps to operationalize these, so we, part of the action before your board is approving a CIP. So there are facility modifications needed in order to complete the vision and all those colors that you see on the map in the last slide. So we want to continue our sequence, work with Public Works and with Nocton Lewis, who got us to this point with that design. The current timeline for construction, if everything sequences correctly and everything has to sequence without sort of hiccups along the way, would be June of 2026, which actually doesn't seem like that far off. The timeline in this, though, is also sequenced with the fact that probation is currently using the reentry center as office space. So they have to move out before, it's the musical chairs moving around, they will have to move and find another location before any of the construction work can start. But we are jumping on this at the earliest possible point so that we, any slack in the system, we're using up right now, so we can do that concurrent planning. So by the time they are in a position to move, we can literally jump on the construction, because any delay in that, the timeline slides out. We also intend to seek B-Chip grant funding, which stands for Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program. Your board is aware of that, because we have received a prior B-Chip grant award related to the expansion of our CSU. There are additional opportunities by this fall to complete applications to help pay for at minimum the modifications that are needed to the facility. And we intend to continue work on the associated programming and meeting these mandates. There's obviously the facility, the physical plant part of it, and there's the sort of magic and the treatment and the programs that happen within the confines of the infrastructure. So related to that, there'll be a request for proposals issued for providers to help support and carry out these various programs and services in our community. And last slide, just wrapping up. You know, the, "It Takes a Village" comes to mind when thinking about all of the moving parts and everything that this county has been through with this facility to get to this point, and also the vision, but also what's ahead. And I cannot thank enough, there are many people that played really critical roles in this and will continue to play critical roles in this. Obviously, your board's support for this, significant, it's a significant investment in County General Fund, to see the wisdom as well of not continuing the lockdown of that facility, quite frankly, getting tied up in a lot of bureaucracy with various state agencies, and seeing the vision to settle this sooner rather than later and get to a point where we can actually put the facility to use. So I want to thank all of you and the CEO's office. I know that Assistant CEO Becky Craig has been chiseling away at this reentry problem and issue for years and years and years, longer than before we visioned out this new opportunity, and also to Ryan Alsop, CEO, for his support in this. The Public Works Department, I can't say enough good things about the support that HHS gets. I feel like a very demanding agency director, and Steve Letter and his team always show up, and they say yes even when they probably should say no. But they take on project after project, and I really feel we have a partner who values the services and supports that we provide to the community and puts it as a top priority. An excellent team there, we can't do any of this without them. Nocton Lewis has been fabulous and amazing as well, the original architects, who I think are quite thrilled to see the county putting this to use, because this is their wheelhouse. Sort of going down the list, the probation department as well. I know when I first spoke with Chief Gibbs about this, she was supportive about exploring what is best for our community. And this makes pragmatic sense, I think, for everybody who knows about it and has known about it and have been partners in it. Also to the Community Corrections Partnership, as noted in your board agenda item, made a request for 8.2 million to the CCP. Again, universal support for this. The CCP is comprised of departments and agencies who all see what the community needs, and this supports all of their programs and services that they provide to the community as well. And then finally, I really want to also acknowledge Deputy Director of Behavioral Health Cassandra Islamy, who's here today, and also Nathan Hobbs, our Assistant Deputy Director in Behavioral Health, who also serves as our county alcohol and drug administrator. They really, in the background, are doing the sausage-making and helping to come up with the designs, the treatment, the programs, the adjacencies. And we have a heck of a lot of work ahead of us, and they show up, they work their tail off, and they are committed and all in. And this, getting to this point would not be possible without the two of them as well, so I really want to thank and acknowledge them, because it's, sometimes the people behind the scenes are killing themselves, and we don't always know that or acknowledge it. So I just can't say enough good things about this county and how we work together. So thank you for your support on this. If you have any questions, and then there's also, I think, six different actions that have to happen related to this.
Right, right. Well, thank you so much, and I know this has been such a journey, and so many different ideas and strategies have come forward, so I thank you for your persistence, too. And I want to turn it over to CEO Alsop.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I would be remiss if I didn't also add to the thank yous, or at least repeat a few of them. I want to thank Jennifer for her vision and persistence and being thorough here, and that's a great presentation. I want to thank Becky. Jennifer's right, Becky has been chipping away at this for a long time and dealing with this, even long before I got here. And we were able to get it done largely because of her efforts. And I wanted to emphasize the support that we see, we receive from the Community Corrections Partnership, CCP. These are people that you all know. The sheriff is a member, our DA is a member, Jennifer, you're a member, Supervisor Gallagher, I think you're a member on that, Barbara Nemko, there are others. There are all these people, including City of Napa people, that are part of this in the criminal justice space. They have skin in the game on this project. They have provided this county 8.2 million dollars to help. That was, that's going into purchasing that facility. That is a major, major contribution, and they are owners and participants in this with us, so we want to thank them doubly.
Thank you for that, Mr. Alsop. At this point, I will go ahead and ask for any public comment from the room, or if there's any public comment on the phones. No public comment, okay? I will bring it back to the board for discussion and a potential motion. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much. I, I think that this item before us, it signifies so much about our future, but I think a lot of our lessons learned as well. The history behind this building, for the benefit of my colleagues' money that we received because we were so decimated from the earthquake, and it was a way to really look at rehabilitation in a different way. And when the decision came to, once we worked through our contractual issues and surety bonds and everything else, to actually get the keys over, the truth is, state law changed. And who was eligible for reentry, co-located probation and correctional justice programming was reduced. It was reduced from what was once a list of 90 people to now, you know, eight to 12 people. It would have cost us $806,000 per client to operate the facility, truly fiscally unmanageable. Not to say that, you know, I certainly, in my prior votes, it's not to say that I didn't believe in the rehabilitation that could have been offered. But our capacity is in fact limited. We're always being asked to do more with less. So I, I want to, I want to reflect back, and Jennifer and your predecessor had to, two predecessors prior, had to listen to my very, very strong opinions about the alcohol and drug rehabilit, treatment facility programming that we did offer when I arrived at the Board of Supervisors. And I remember, while I am grateful to the Napa State Hospital for leasing a space, the truth is, on my very first visit, what was then McAllister offered zero hope. And I remember walking away and thinking, it's a really sad state when the choice of sobriety and changed behaviors is more dim than a stay at our correctional facility downtown. And I have always believed that we needed to do better, and so you and I have had these discussions many times over. And when I, I thought, you know, we could do this, right? And we've tried, we've tried many a times. And I never thought I would say the day that I am glad that the state of California is in fact forcing our hand in this, because it is in fact where alcohol and drug rehabilitative services really needed to be. And quite a circuitous way to get us here, but I just really want to acknowledge you, Director Yasumoto, and your team for your efforts in getting us here. And you, Assistant CEO Craig, I mean, the number of times I've said to you, just go find the money, what this is going to cost, I will continue to express my disappointment in the state of California's unwillingness to be a financial partner in this. But I am grateful for the Community Corrections Partnership for seeing that this is in fact what our community is worthy of. And go build a way and get it done, and I will turn that into a motion. If anyone has other comments, there are long ones, and I'm ready for them, I have them up.
Great, thank you. So we will have a potential motion. I know I've got another light on for Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. I'm pausing, because this means a lot to me. My family, like many families, have loved ones that have suffered, because we haven't had a program like this, where is described, where it gets so progressive and escalates, where someone is found in jail having a hard detox in jail, possibly in restraints. And that is the safest and only place for them. This is a very big moment. And as Supervisor Ramos said, this is one of those situations where, you know, we can thank the state enforcing this solution that's going to serve so many people in this county, and their families, and their friends, and their neighbors. It's going to have such incredible impacts on law enforcement, on the mobile response team that's out there addressing, you know, critical mental health incidences out there. This is about the prevention and intervention of someone going from having a manageable mental health issue, and hopefully preventing them from having more severe mental health issues, to the point of possibly no return. And with that, often is that substance abuse disorder, because they're trying to self-manage, because they don't have access to services. I just, this is a transformative project for our community. It's a generational one. I don't know how many other counties in California have these kind of centers or facilities. Do you happen to know, Director Yasumoto? I'm not familiar of any county-owned.
Not a lot, because this is, and this is this configuration as well. It's a really unique opportunity for our county to have 21,000 square feet to dedicate to behavioral space, particularly accounting our size.
Exactly. And my, one of my questions was, will this be specific for Napa County residents or former Napa County residents, or is this going to be open to the state? Are we going to be having a lot of neighboring counties wanting to access this center?
So first and foremost, Napa County, right? But in all transparency, if the financing, some of this is financing too, and keeping the beds occupied, so in the event that happens, then we will open it up to other counties to keep the services running, because there are fixed costs, as Supervisor Ramos noted when it was the reentry, there are some fixed costs built into this. So to make the financing of this work, we may need to, but of course, first and foremost, it's for Napa County residents.
Fantastic. Let's see, I've got some notes here, but then I went off on my own thoughts. Let me get back here. I've heard over some time, well, let me just say, back to my original thought, when I worked for Queen Valley Medical's Community Outreach, at Queen Valley Medical Center Community Outreach for 10 years, and assisted with community health needs assessments that were required every three years for hospitals to maintain their nonprofit status. I started there in 2008, and around 2012 or '10, I can't remember, out of the blue, mental health became the number one identified health need in Napa County. Might have been 2015, but I think it was before that, because I left it 2018. But it's been more than 10 years, and along with that was some abuse disorders. Prior to that, it was more traditional health issues such as stroke, heart disease, cancer, even tailed obesity. And then this came to the forefront, and it's been very difficult to get, as a countywide that's very collaborative, that has many community-based organizations, you know, be able to make a dent in. And there's been a lot of progress in work, even in the last two years with our Behavioral Health Department. I want to acknowledge Director Islama and Nathan, and Jennifer, Director Jennifer Yasumoto, for this transformative time to really create a behavioral health program, and now this. I really see this making a dent, and I look forward to those future assessments and see how we make those change, and see the change in that. In terms of the state hospital buildings, there's a term lipstick on a pig. I don't know if that's really nice or politically correct, but that's what I've heard. I've not been out there, but I've heard a lot of, a lot of difficult stories of personal experiences out there. This is night and day, what our residents and others can benefit from. In terms of questions, let's see, ask that question. The medically assisted area for withdrawal, is that going to be medically assisted, the withdrawal area, withdrawal management for your residences? Because I, in terms of medical assistance during detox and recovery, will that be incorporated in the program? Because I think we're needing that still.
So that is provided, but we also, I think what you might be referencing is within the, in January of 2025, so this year, we stood up and opened up a medication-assisted treatment in our outpatient clinic.
Okay.
Located at South Campus. So that's provided outpatient. So that's provided outpatient.
And so for someone going through detox, is there medical assistance in terms of medication assistance for detox?
So we also have an entire, a set of contracts with medication-assisted treatment providers as well.
Okay, perfect. And then will there also be outpatient and/or other support services for the public or will this all be residential and enclosed?
So here it's residential, but as your board knows, we do run our own outpatient alcohol and drug treatment program. So that will remain. And actually, when, when clients are discharged from this program, they go to our program. So there's a referral pathway and sort of lower levels of care to support ongoing recovery. And our services at Health and Human Services include the whole span of intensive outpatient, outpatient and recovery services to keep people again from the relapse.
Okay, very good. Well, in terms of the, those who say yes, I say yes.
Terrific. Do you wanna make that into a second?
I'll take that and make that a second, thank you.
Right. So we have a motion from Supervisor Ramos, a second from Supervisor Alessio. Are there other questions? Go ahead, Supervisor Ramos.
Chair, I'm gonna take them just because one is budget amendments and the other ones are the creation of plans. I'm gonna take them into two separate motions. So if you're ready for that, I'll go ahead.
Let's go.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close out the facility acquisition and approve budget amendments to increase transfers out appropriations in Fund 2500 subdivision one zero two zero zero eight one, Community Corrections Partnership by eight point two million dollars, offset by the use of available fund balance to redirect transfers in with Fund 3000 seven point three. I've got a question, hold on.
Correction memo is seven point seven million, thank you.
Seven, seven point seven million from subdivision three thousand five six, five sixty, project twenty-five zero zero five to subdivision three million. Accumulated capital outlay for future use, increased appropriations in Fund 3000 subdivision three zero 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 five six zero, project twenty-five zero zero five by five hundred thousand for an increased cost to close out the purchase, offset by project fund balance.
I'll second if that's.
Perfect. So we have a motion by Supervisor Ramos, a second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously and we'll go for round two here.
I'll make a motion for the new purpose, for the designated new purpose for the reentry facility to approve the creation of a capital improvement project and approve the related budget amendments as follow. Establish new capital improvement project in Fund 3000 subdivision three thousand five fifty, project twenty-five zero five zero, HHSA Behavioral Health Treatment Center. Increase appropriations in project twenty-five zero five zero for engineer services by three hundred thousand, offset by a transfer in revenues from HHSA. Increase transfers out appropriation in Fund 2000 subdivision two hundred, one thousand, HHSA administration by three hundred thousand, offset by use of available fund balance.
I'll second.
A motion by Supervisor Ramos, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your work on this. This is really big. All right, so with that, we will power through to eleven D where we will receive a presentation of our facility's master plan development, including conceptual design, financing plan and recommended implementation plan. At the end of that, we will adjourn to closed session and then we will return after that to finish out the remainder of our items.
We don't need to adjourn to closed session today. It's a quick report.
Okay, perfect.
And the other two items are super fast.
So, okay, great, thank you. Good morning, team.
On off.
Morning.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, Steve Letterer here. I'd like to introduce our partners in this project, Julian Watt and Chris Lenz with LPA, who have been, as I said, teammates and partners in, in preparing the facility's master plan. So just by way of background, a couple of years ago, actually, the board acknowledged the, the need that the county had in the sense that we had several departments that were overflowing at the seams, did not have adequate space for all of their staff. These included, among others, but particularly the District Attorney, Planning, Building and Environmental Services, the CEO's office, HR, and others. But those, those were the ones that were, were most acute. At the same time, we also identified we had a number of aging facilities that needed a great deal of, of maintenance work. So we started down the path of, of identifying a, an overall master plan program. There were five options put in front of the board, and I'm not gonna go back all through those. The board ultimately chose option four, which was a, a plan that would have us ultimately selling or getting rid of and selling eleven twenty-seven first, our Hall of Justice slash existing jail, and then doing significant upgrades to building four at South Campus, as well as this building here, six fifty Imperial. So the goal of today's session, and I, I always love between, you know, being between you guys at lunch. So we'll, we'll try, we'll try and be as efficient as we can. But we have done a, a great deal of work in terms of flushing, fleshing out what that option four would look like and what some of the costs associated with that could be. And we're gonna make a presentation on that. As an adjunct to that, a couple of months ago, it occurred to me that as conditions have changed and economic conditions have changed, that it is possible that the board might want to do a pause or do something different. So I kinda went off in a corner and started developing an alternative plan that with the help of CEO Alsop that we've, we've sort of fleshed out. So I will also talk to the board about that as an alternative. And then obviously, we're available for questions. Oh, and Assistant CEO Craig will, is also available to talk about how we would finance any of the plans. I do wanna make clear that there is this option four we're talking about. There's this alternative plan that I've been working on. But these problems that we originally identified, the, the lack of space, the deferred maintenance still exist. So a, a do nothing option is really not an option. So with that, I am gonna turn it over to Julian.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So Stephen's managed to run through almost the agenda in its entirety, which is great. So the, the context is, Stephen's already provided the timeline. We'll run through items there about what the goals were and.
Yeah, you might move the microphone just a little closer so that anyone who's listening could, thanks.
Excellent, thank you very much. And then I'll be handing over back to Becky to run through the project financing. And then Stephen will run through the minimalist option, which he mentioned, and then a wrap-up. So without further ado. Part of what Stephen was describing before was the, the wider context. So in gray is the facility's master plan that was done. Little red dot there is, is LPA, that's the piece that we've done. So it's diving into more detail so you can understand the real costs of implementing option four. The next series of bars in blue indicate different design phases to execute and finish off. Option four is as it stands right now, which is what we're doing, will be the next step. And the orange bars indicate the phasing. So be if this was to be implemented, the real key that unlocks this is developing the work down on the South Campus. And then that enables you to move here to this, this sort of super block here and start developing the options around that. So that's the sort of broader time horizon, all completing somewhere near the end of twenty twenty-nine into twenty thirty. As Stephen said, there was five options. The facility's master plan indicated option number four was selected. And the key ones in there, as I mentioned, is the remodeling of South Campus. That, as I said, is the bit that unlocks everything else. Admin building was renovated and renovate the six fifty Imperial and obviously dropping or demolishing the HOJ to reconfigure what that site could become, which would require a new court holding facility to maintain that functionality. And then the sale of eleven twenty-seven First Street. Once we started, the key one in there is obviously to re, to relook at things and goals. So we went back and double-checked that we're on track with the goals that came out of the facility's master plan. The piece in here is we've gone and done what's called a detailed programming. So really understanding in greater detail what's needed to develop out the spaces for each different department and then actually test fit those within these different buildings to see that they do fit and other inefficiencies or efficiencies have been gained. We also need to come together with a, an overall conceptual design. So how are these different sites going to evoke the meaning or the idea of what the Napa County wants to represent itself to itself and also to its public? And then all of that put together enables us to get to a detailed cost estimate, which is really important. So that's obviously what you've got today. So that sort of sums it up. And then Chris?
Goal-setting, every successful project starts with goal-setting, as we know. There were great goals in the facility master plan. We wanted to dive a little bit deeper into something that's super important to LPA and sustainable design. We have four pillars that we recognize under community, experience, performance and wellness. And we've developed a, a card deck, if you will, as an activity. You can see the picture on the right is your executive leadership team walking through this process. And each, each pillar has about twenty topics for discussion. So that's about fifty. And then you're only given ten stickies. And that, this is really an exercise in prioritization and consensus building. And so out of that, we established eleven goals. And I know they're very small to read, kind of under these pillars. They're very important, retaining talent, idea sharing, efficiency, identity, aligning workspace design with process and workflow. But the deeper discussion really was about performance. That is on everybody's mind, being sustainable or carbon neutral, having all those buzzwords, all-electric, PV. And so how can we make this project, you know, realize those, those goals? Operational, and then minimize a sense of overcrowding. I think you guys have seen a lot of pictures and we've walked all of your spaces. So we have great empathy. But we are a little bit different at LPA. We have a research behavioral psychologist on our team for the workplace strategy. And what she brings, Rachel, as, as your staff has gotten to know her, is really a different perspective and making sure that those goals are being discussed throughout the whole process. So she's looking at more national and what are employees saying about their workplace and what's important? And does that resonate? Movement, adjustability, variety and choice, biophilic design, access to outdoors. And we know that having a healthy workplace makes healthy, happy employees. So this is just a summary of all the activities we, we did in three to four months. Lots of online meetings. We again met, walked through all the departments. We saw their space, their needs. We had focus groups from security to collaboration. We had committees taking a deeper dive into workplace standards and Board Hearing Room. This is a very complicated space, important space. And it's certainly the one-stop shop concept, which was an idea in the facility master plan. We had our leadership workshop. We had, you know, looking at organizational charge, just kind of taking it all in. And the priorities that came out of this really were people first, conference second, and storage. We also wanted to reclassify all the workplace standards to bring consistency among all the roles amongst all the departments. That, that's great for consistency, but also helps you in the future for flexibility. So with that, as we said, the facility master plan had kind of a overall square feet per person, but we needed to take a deeper dive and to make sure that everybody was accounted for, every space need. And so there are quantitative tallies in program documents. But because we were working with existing shapes and geometries of these buildings, we had to do in tandem the stacking diagrams to make sure we were addressing security needs, especially in this building with, you know, public defender versus district attorney. So we, we worked with everybody on those adjacencies. And these are so teeny. These are the floor plans. So we move into test fits. You know, numbers are numbers, but really the test fit tells you what, what works. And you learn a lot about the gifts of the building or the challenges. And so the little yellow errors are, we're always looking at daylight and how, you know, we can take advantage of the existing windows in, in this particular building. There's four floors, lower level will have the extra space for DA and public defender. But the main level has, what we liked about this building, it has the kind of what you probably think of the back door, which is by the parking lot, is really, we think should become the front door because that's where people park. And it gives you this great opportunity to have a separation of public defender constituents and then district attorney. And so we've kind of moved, we'll illustrate that. And we've parked money for new wayfinding and kind of a new entry statement. But plus, we've also taken the board room and moved it to the first floor. Easy, easy access, better security, more space. District Attorney's on the second floor and the third floor is really the same people that are here, County Council, Board of Supervisors and Clerk of the Board and CEO. So we learned a lot about this building and, and its needs. And we, we got everybody to fit. We did, I think, you guys in your report, we did have to move auditor controller to South Campus. So South Campus is a little more regular shaped building. If you know it, if you've been there, the, the entrance is offset. So we actually wanted to, the main drive is to realign the lobby so that it's very clear. This is gonna have permitting, assessor, tax. Like everybody's gonna come to this facility where they used to come here, right? So we wanted to make sure it had a very strong presence and easy wayfinding. In our one-stop committee, we actually, I loved the idea of, originally we were thinking it was all gonna be on one floor. And they came up a better idea to keep the, your personal interaction with the county. If your taxes or assessor, recorder, clerk, clerk are downstairs and upstairs would be all the kind of your business needs for permitting. And so PBS and Public Works and Fire and Auditor Controller is up there. So we've kept sheriff radio. You have a lot of equipment in there that we wanted to keep, keep that right there. So this building worked out very well. Then in six fifty, really the theme for six fifty is about accessibility upgrades and security. And so it's just about helping CSOA. I think it went to Jennifer's. They've, they've got some people that are dispersed across the aisle and it's, it's very hard for their constituents coming in. And so we wanna bring them back onto their side because this has sort of a natural split of two-sided and realign the lobby entrance so that it's a little bit more safe and secure. And then the interview rooms would be on the other side. And then IT upstairs just organizing kind of their, their technology and conference spaces. And then the court holdings, so this is sort of a Tetris, as Julian calls this. You know, very unique needs and sequencing of operation. So the site, we worked with the site, very tricky because it really needs to be built while the Hall of Justice is still up and running. And so we worked through all the difficulties of that with our engineers and with the sheriff and the county team. So the holding is on the lower level, still connected to the tunnel. And then the upstairs is staff. So it's kind of a one-story building. I think it works quite well tucked in there. That, talk about design.
And as you said, see through, through the information that Chris has been presenting, it gets you to a level of detail that enables the cost plan to have some real relevance, which is, which is fundamentally the, the key point that we're trying to get to, to make sure that whatever's authorized to carry forward is, is clear and can be executed over a five-year period. So design concept-wise, we, what we're trying to distill in here is, how is, what is, what's the export? What's the brand identity, if you will, of, of Napa County? And, and a, and a short, it's something you can try and, try and distill down. And so what we're getting to is, is trying to really celebrate Napa's natural beauty and agricultural excellence. As you can tell from my accent, I'm not from, not from here, but also from a place that also tries to make its mark in winemaking as well. And so where that came down to is, is the, is the concept of biophilia and really trying to leverage the landscape design and really make sure that it's not just plants and paths. You're really making it, you're programming each space, making it useful for yourselves as well as your, your community as well. So jumping through to the admin site, as Chris said, it's really thinking about the revising that what might have been thought as a rear entry is becoming the, the first prime entry and reconfiguring what's currently some paths and plants at the front of the building or what was the front at the. building, or what was the front at the street entrance on the other side, to, to really be programmed and be usable from there. So this is the overall site plan, pulling everything together with the future development in the middle, if HOJ is demolished. This is another view from the other side, just talking about the, what was currently the, the main entry and reconfiguring those for, for future use. Covering out spaces for people and making them the functional programmable spaces. From the exterior of the building, without trying to touch everything, it's also trying to create a sense of identity. And so what are some of the moments that could happen on that building to create a sense of place, revise the identity of the building itself, and also provide sort of natural direction as to where the entry is? Unfortunately, a lot of the buildings of a similar era are, architects seem to forget about the entry. I don't know why, but we're constantly trying to correct those as we go through. From that, what this is showing here is we went to a lot of detail as well at a structural level. So what were the requirements to upgrade the seismic resilience of the building we're in right now, as well as building four and also six fifty Imperial? And so that you had equity across all buildings for all staff members.
Building entry, I think you can, if you tell her this is the first floor. So we're actually going to offset sort of the main entry and captures the space out, out in the front for conference room shared. And then the left side with the light blue is really where the public defender entry would be. And just re-envisioning that whole sequence, I think is important, and look at the opportunities there. And then, of course, the board hearing room. We had our committee, and one thing that we looked at was not only for board hearing, but maybe the other commissions, what, what would that look like? And so there's thirteen, you can kind of see splayed down, there's sort of the image of this sort of welcoming, a little bit similar to what you have today. It will seat one hundred and twenty-five, the dais is raised. It, it will give opportunity for a, a private, you can see those red arrows, to close session and restrooms. But it's, what's great is it's just right off the public lobby, so it'll be very easy to find.
And as well as the seismic upgrades, any structural upgrades required to achieve this were incorporated in the, in the plans we saw on the earlier page. The next slide is just a, as if you like, an artist impression or architectural rendering of, of what it might be for the building you see every day, and what's, what some simple things could be done to elevate the experience and, and give it a facelift without trying to touch everything. Moving down to South Campus, as Chris mentioned before, the key moment here is all about entry and sequencing and making it clear as to where, where that building entry is. It's previously, previous use is all, all internal focus. It wasn't on display as to what was going on inside for those labs, and now it needs to become your new front door for your connection. So it's really trying to, to celebrate that and, and make that clearer, and open up a building that was otherwise very closed. So you can see some of the initial moves here of reconfiguring that front entrance, elevating it. That will bring us into a double heart lobby space to, to bring, bring that sense of drama for, for not only your community coming into the building and using it, but also your staff members for retention and recruitment as well.
So this is sliced through that two-story volume, so you come in on the right, kind of the big brown element is, is the two-story. Come through, there's a security point, and the darker shades are the floor lows, but the wood is where the, you would have a two-story lobby, probably the skylight. So you can see the activity and the connection of both floors and the public counters, and just this really nice synergy with what's happening between the two groups, and of course, the help desk.
And for both buildings, to achieve all of this, there's a change of use, so there is a seismic upgrade required to that building. We're also filling in a bunch of open floor plates to use those floors. So there's, this is, this is indicating that we've captured all of the, the structural work required and obviously the costs associated with them. Segues into, where's, show me the money, right? So what's the, what's the estimated cost? So the next couple of slides here are just to try and provide some context. So the first one here is that the facilities master plan is a really powerful document that you've had to produce and create five really strong, different options. And they're all relative to the moment in time they were created in 2014 and the prices associated with them. The light blue bar is relevant to the construction costs in 2024. After a more detailed investigation of how you work and what your space needs are and how it fits into the actual buildings as opposed to averages, that construction cost in today's dollars is in blue. But we also now know what the timeline is to produce this over a series of phases. And so that also includes an escalation cost to keep building, if you will, until the end of 2019 and 2030. And so that brings us into the orange cost. Both of that, both of that implementation over a series of years means that the soft costs also are higher than, than what was anticipated originally. So the number that you might have started with at a hundred and forty million dollars in 2024, which didn't have any escalation included in this detailed study, is just shy of two hundred million dollars to execute. The point of this in terms of its relativity is that the other options you have in your facilities master plan are all excellent, different individual options. The dollar terms associated with them would probably undergo a similar adjustment. This next slide is just a little bit more detail broken down to each building. The light blue bars indicate the, the construction costs of the, the projects in twenty-fourteen dollars. The dark blue indicates their relative construction costs in today's dollars, and the orange uptick is, is the escalation. So that, for example, the administration building has more escalation to it because it's being constructed after the, the work down on the South Campus. That's why there's more, more orange in that bar. And this is just a, a, a simple diagram to remind everyone, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. And so that, this, while it's literally just shy of two hundred million dollars of, of work, if we continue on the journey we're on now, if the same journey carries, but it's in a couple of, two, two and a half years' time, then it's probably more in the region of two hundred and twenty million dollars. If there's a further shift to a similar scale of project in, in sort of five years' time or five-year movement, it's probably more closer to the two hundred and fifty million dollars. So that's just the escalation cost at the moment. So that segues to project financing.
If you could go to the next slide, please? What this slide is trying to say is a lot of detailed data that was put together by our debt activity advisory committee here at the county in working collaboration with our municipal advisor, KNN. So as this project was proceeding, we would have conversations with KNN to discuss what the project was scoping out to be and proposed with the timelines, with the costing, to then get their recommendations on how best to be able to finance this large construction project. And once we got the final information that Julian has just shared with you, that was provided to KNN to run some scenarios. We could run almost an infinite amount of scenarios, but we tried to provide at least enough information here that people could either extrapolate out what other scenarios could look like or to request other scenarios for further study. The first option is the full option, two hundred million dollars, go to the market. The conversation assumes that we would need to do two different issuances. Because of IRS regulations, we would not expect to be able to spend all the funds in three years, as we could see from the timeline. So that would be to break up the project into two sub-projects for financing purposes. They would be one master project with basically two series, is what you call that. Certificates of participation would be the recommended tool for that purpose. It is a mechanism used by many local governments for long-term financing. And this recommendation would be in early 2026, would be to do the first issuance to line up with the first phase of projects, primarily South Campus. And then the second phase would come about eighteen months later in 2027, when we were ready to go out to bid and construct the second phase of projects. The options here would be a twenty-year payback option, a twenty-five-year payback option, or a thirty-year payback option. The dollar amounts that are associated with these are all based on a lot of assumptions. What would be the issuance cost? What would be the interest rates at the time? But all of those variables and assumptions were made on a conservative basis, knowing that the market could change in the next year to two years. And with that, the dollar amounts reflect a very conservative posture of what those annual tax payments could be over those time periods identified. And so the most aggressive of a two hundred million dollar issuance over a twenty-year payback would result in about sixteen million dollars in annual debt payments. Whereas if you wanted to spread it over a thirty-year period and be less aggressive, then it would be about a thirteen and a half million dollars annual payments for thirty years. We did ask KNN to study one alternative, which was to do less than twenty million dollars. So we asked them to go look at about a hundred and fifty million dollars, to not do the full scope of projects that were disidentified, but the two primary, which would be South Campus, building four, and this building. And then to delay the other parts of that project for further financing. And that's what option two is showing here. Again, over the same assumptions of interest rates, the, in the terms of twenty, twenty-five, and thirty, you could have payments of twelve million dollars a year over twenty years, or you could be down to about ten million dollars a year over thirty years by the option two. So this was just to provide information for the board to understand that there are financing options available. KNN did do a very brief study of our capacity, of our collateral, and of our creditworthiness, and all of that came back positive, which was stated in the board packet, and that detailed information is available if interested. But it would then feed into, if the board gave direction to proceed with the bond issuance, doing a formal presentation to the rating agencies and to get a formal credit rating, and to then bring back information over the next four to six months as the bid documents were coming forward, to then authorize the issuance of bonds. But that would be concurrent with any other project work. So, thank you.
So as I mentioned, well, and let me just say, I think the board's direction on this option four was, is still very valid direction. I think the plan that LPA has created is excellent, and I would love to build it, and I think our employees would, would really enjoy it, and that there are a lot of benefits associated with it. That being said, as a, you know, was kind of looking at the landscaping over the past several months, I wanted to think about if the board was not ready to pull the trigger on this quite yet, what was, what were some of the things we could do that would meet our immediate needs, both in terms of space and maintenance, without precluding the ability to come back and do either this master plan or some other master plan in the future? So some of the goals that I laid out for myself, if you will, minimize initial capital outlay, although as I said before, zero is not an option. Any option is going to cost a certain amount of money. Provide some time to save funds. We, as this board knows, and our, we actually got certificate of occupancy on the jail yesterday, got the certificate today, but that project was ten or fifteen years in the planning. We spend a lot of time saving money for that. We haven't had that time to do that on this project. So, so one, one of the goals perhaps is to provide some time to save some money, which would ultimately reduce our borrowing, still resolve our short-term space issue, provide time to evaluate this option or other options in the, in the context of what the economic conditions are today, or what they might be six months from now, or a year from now. Board right might remember, early on in this process, we tried to do some sort of coordination with the city of Napa, to do a joint campus. That didn't work at that time. Doesn't mean it might not work in the future. There may be an opportunity to do something there. So with, with that thought, what I came down to was, first off, to make this, to make this happen, we have to retain the Hall of Justice and eleven twenty-seven first at this point. Three hundred people come to work every morning and go to work at eleven twenty-seven. They need a place to work. The Hall of Justice currently, even though the inmates are leaving, the Hall of Justice still houses our day court holding facility, and it still houses, houses a critical radio and communications infrastructure. So if we were to get, when we get rid of that building, which I'm sure we will, at some point, we're going to need to, we would need to build a new day court holding facility. We would need to move that radio equipment, both of which are very expensive projects. Under my concept, we would still continue to maintain building four at South Campus, but not do any further development to it. Just a reminder, there are many people even today that work in building four. ITS Communications is there. We have, we have tenants there. Several of our other elected officials have offices there. There's a lot of storage there, property maintenance there. So building four is not an empty building. It, it's certainly underutilized, but it is, is in no way an empty building. And some of our employees are working in spaces where, where the roof leaks and the air conditioning doesn't work. So we would retain it, but we need to do something to keep the building, frankly, from further damaging itself and decreasing the value of our asset. My plan would require some refurbishment of the Hall of Justice, eleven twenty-seven, building four, this building, and six fifty Imperial, and I'll get to all those. So what are some of the moves that we would still need to do? We talked in the previous agenda item about probation. Probation currently at, at the re-entry, they need to move most likely into leased space, and under this plan, we would also move child support services from eleven twenty-seven into that same leased space. Probation, I mentioned probation and re-entry, and Public Works would actually move from the administration building onto the second floor of the HOJ space that was previously occupied by probation. Probation moved out of that space because there were a lot of issues with plumbing and whatnot associated with the inmates being on the third floor and damaging the plumbing, but in a very short order, that's not going to be the case, which makes the second floor of, of the Hall of Justice more usable for people. What does this, what does this get us? So the district attorney, again, which is desperate for space, would be able to take over the child support services space in eleven twenty-seven. PB, PBES and the CEO and HR will be able to expand into space that will be vacated by Public Works, by us going across the way. We would also create enough space for our fire folks who are currently in leased space at, I think it's nine fifty California Boulevard? I know they're on California Boulevard. That lease runs for another three years, so they wouldn't move immediately, but we would eventually, you know, we would have that space that they could move back, and we wouldn't have to be paying leased space. And if we needed any more space in eleven twenty-seven, there would also be space for elections in the Hall of Justice if, if we needed to do that. So what are so, what are some of the costs associated with this in the short term? These are estimates, you know, kind of very, very high level, and there, there are probably ways to do some of this cheaper than these numbers. Some of them may be a little more. You just do have to see as we get into it. But we mentioned that probation and child support services will need to move into leased space, so there'll be some, some amount of cost associated with tenant improvements and furniture and whatnot in their new leased space, as well as the physical move itself. At the Hall of Justice, there is work that needs to be done on the plumbing, on the HVAC, and then furniture and tenant improvements to move Public Works across the way. At eleven twenty-seven first, there are some ADA, well, just mention the project that the board authorized last year to do HVAC, and the roof at eleven twenty-seven is, is in progress. Right now, we should be lifting new air conditioning units onto the roof there sometime in the next, I'll say, few weeks or, or a month or two. But there's additional, there's some- But there's additional, there's some ADA work, some fire alarm work, some security work, and whatever tenant improvements the DA needs for moving into child support space. At 650 Imperial, I think was mentioned a little earlier, there are some ADA and front counter security issue primarily associated with CSOA that need to be dealt with. And at Building Four, I mentioned that we have some significant HVAC and roof issues. Somebody, somebody asked me how bad the roof is, you know, do you have like buckets, you know, collecting the water? I said, no, we have swimming pools collecting the water. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there just to, just to maintain the building. And again, these are, these are high-level cost estimates, some of which, you know, absolutely has to happen right now. I mean, we can't do reentry without moving probation. We can't solve the DA without moving child support. Can't solve space in this building without moving somebody across, across the way. And then some of it is a little more, is a little more flexible in terms of timing. So these are the short term. In the sort of medium term, and I'm talking two, I'd say, two to five years, and some of it really is five years. But for instance, at Hall of Justice, we know that there'll be roof and HVAC work and security, the security elevator there will need work. That's not immediate, but we can just, you know, just by looking at it, we know a few years out, we're eventually going to need to do a roof. We're going to eventually need to do HVAC. So again, 1127, optional but recommended. These are HVAC control systems, so we're putting new HVAC units on the roof, which will go a long way towards comfort in that building. But all of the control systems over there are old. We can continue to piecemeal the repairs and whatnot, but depending on how long we're going to stay there, there are, you know, there are real improvements that could, should be made. I just want to mention lighting, because it's a broad issue. Most, many of the lighting systems we have in all of our buildings are the older fluorescent lights, which were the state-of-the-art when they were put in. We're now moving to LED, and when a unit breaks, we replace it with LED, because the reality is you can't buy fluorescents anymore. So all of our buildings are going to need lighting upgrades, but they're not cheap. And somewhere in here, I believe we're going to at least need to pull the trigger on at least one lighting upgrade for one building, and then we'll save the parts in order to keep the other buildings going until, until we can replace them. But as an example, the lighting upgrade for this, for this building, it's a rough number, it's like $2 million. So, they're expensive projects, they're going to need to get done eventually. They don't have to be done tomorrow, but they, they need, but they do need to be done. And there are energy savings associated with them as well, so they will pay for themselves to some extent over time. Administration Building, this building here, don't have to do anything today, or tomorrow, or the day after, but we have identified there are seismic upgrades, which eventually should be done in this building. There are building comfort issues in this building, which everyone has, has experienced. And even if we, again, replace units on the roof, the building control systems and the way this building is ventilated is just wrong. It's not controllable. And the, the only way to do both the seismic and the HVAC is actually to vacate parts of the building, to actually move people, which is very disruptive, very expensive. But if you're going to do one, you might as well do both, right? Because both the, the comfort and the seismic issues require the same amount of moving people. So it's an expensive project. It's an important project. Needs to be done eventually if we're going to stay in this building. Does not need to be done tomorrow. So anyway, so those are, those are some of those costs. And then coming to next steps, and I think I'm throwing this to Ryan, but next, but we could proceed with Option Four, as the Board, that was the last direction we got from the Board, was proceed with Option Four, which is what we've been doing. We could proceed with some form of this, it used to be called the Letterer Option, I kind of renamed it the Minimalist Option, or something else, provide other direction. And again, I think the importance of the minimalist option is that it doesn't preclude any of your decisions in the future, whether that be six months, or two years, or six years from now. The work that LPA did is still valuable. Your options remain open, and yet we do solve some of our short-term issues with less money. So I think I'll throw it to the boss here.
Well, I appreciate that, and I did want to thank LPA. They, they have done good work, and we really appreciate all of it and collaboration. I think I'm just going to hand it to, to the Board for discussion. I really don't have anything to add. I've spoken to all of you individually. There's a Board letter that accompanied this item, and I will, I will leave it at that, and we're happy to drill down on that a bit if you'd like, and also answer any questions you might have.
Great. So just to frame the discussion here, I think this is, we're, staff is looking for general direction, but we don't have to have a particular vote, I believe, at this point. So it's a chance to ask some questions, give some feedback about what you've heard today, and, and share some ideas, and then that direction staff can take and come back to us when appropriate with, with more of a plan. So at this point, I know we've got some folks here who've been very patient. I would love to open up the public hearing, or excuse me, the public comment period, and ask anyone who wants to make a comment to come to the podium. Good afternoon, Mr. Bernardini, and Mr. Huether.
(laughter)
(inaudible) being the last one on the agenda. Everybody's thinking about lunch.
Oh, we've got more, we've got more.
I have a whole new appreciation for the work that you guys do. I haven't been in these chambers for a long time, and I'm just so appreciative of all the work. My name is Gordon Huether, Napa resident since 1962. In 1962, I was three years old, and my immigrant parents brought me here against my will. And I'm since very grateful that they did, because I just love this place so much. I also own a property and a business in the county, out on Monticello Road, and I recently concluded 20 years on the City of Napa Planning Commission. I'm here to offer some comments on the future of the Carruthers Building. I guess you guys are calling it something else. What do we call it, 11-something First? I know it as the Carruthers Building. When I was in my late teens, I ran the men's department there and sold suits and socks and boxers and stuff, so I remember it as a department store. And the possible relocation of our county employees currently occupying that building. As you all know, I sent you, everyone, an email outlining my thoughts last week, and would like to reiterate some of those thoughts here. Downtown Napa has gone through the most amazing transformation over the past 20 years, so much so that the private sectors come to town. One of the representatives just couldn't take it anymore, I guess, had other meetings. He was also going to speak. But they've come to town, and they're investing a half a billion dollars with a B in downtown Napa, right across the street at the Coles Department Store site, directly across the street from the Carruthers Building. You will see the demolition of Coles in the next couple of months. It's happening. It's the real deal. I share this to point out that the Carruthers Building, I think we can all agree that it's an eyesore, it's an albatross of a building, and it's the last remnant of the disaster of the redevelopment of the 1970s. And there's overwhelming support from the community and the city for its removal as soon as possible. As long as that building is there, it stands as a blemish on our urban landscape and is preventing hope for future quality development in the immediate future. On the humanity side of things, the idea of housing our important county staff in a concrete, windowless box, an abandoned apartment store, is not really the best way to show how much we value them and how much we value their work. LPA, you guys mentioned natural light. We don't have any in there. I understand that Jim Keller has offered a building with ample square footage and plenty of parking. I also understand that this idea presents also some challenges, but pretty much any and all potential sites, including staying where you are, will have its challenges. I hope we can look at this as how we can get this done and not why, and not look at as why we can't. What we need here is creativity. We need commitment, focus, and flexibility to come up with a solution, both for the short-term and long-term benefit to the county and to the city. I know that stewardship of county finances is super important. I couldn't agree more. And I believe that figuring out how to vacate that building is not mutually exclusive with that stewardship. Our community stands ready to support you in this effort, and I so very much appreciate you, each and every one of you, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Huether.
My name is Danny Bernardini, Business Manager for Napa-Solano Building and Construction Trade Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, representing the working women and men of Union Construction in Napa and Solano Counties. Earlier this year, we were given the right to negotiate for Building Four. Right off the bat, it was looking pretty good. We had a meeting in person, thanks to county leadership, Steve Letterer, and supervisors for setting all that up and giving us that opportunity. We've exchanged a couple of drafts, nothing that I don't think we can get through, and then news of this started coming out. And so, I know that financial decisions are always a tough one. They're not just for you, but they're for the generations that come after you. So I understand that the decision is yours, that's why the voters put you up here, and you'll make the right decision. What I do want to offer is to let us finish, continue and finish these negotiations, because it is a single-project PLA, aside, different than a county-wide, it, it could be used for not just the project we're currently negotiating for, but anything we decide in the future. So I understand this is probably going to be a multiple-meeting decision, and there's going to be a lot of ins and outs, depending on what you all decide in the schedule. And so what I'm asking is for us to continue this, which I don't think would take probably more than a few more meetings, a few more draft exchanges to get that done. And should that project ever get done, great, but if, once we see the new schedule, and we could possibly look at maybe applying this to another project or group of projects, you know, we have many crafts that are really good at tenant improvement, and so I see some of these projects that could be coming along as another opportunity. Not that we'd ever want to give up the, the larger 40 to 50 million dollar project that we're currently negotiating, but if there is a way we could finish and have a template for a single-project PLA, which could be applied to something very small or very large, it doesn't really matter, once we agree on terms. And so, again, I appreciate staff and leadership really making these hard decisions. Go back in, back in time, when we were over in Solano County, the, I saw a sheriff stand up and say, "Don't build me a new jail," which I never thought I'd see before, right? He said, "I can't staff it. It'll sit empty. It's a waste of money right now." This was during the first downturn, right? And we have some economic uncertainty coming, and so for staff to say, you know, we had all this planned, and we were going to have shiny new buildings, but it might not be the right decision, is a responsible one, so. And if there's anything that the building trades can do at the state or national level to help secure anything for the, the security and the safety and the, you know, for the county going forward, we would want to volunteer that as well. So please, let us finish these negotiations and have a draft ready to apply to any projects in the future. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bernardini. Anyone else in the room who wants to speak, or on the phones? Okay. Mr. Allsop?
Do you allow me to?
Absolutely.
Say just a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank Danny from the trades. He's great. He's great to be around. He's a, he's a super lovely guy. He's right, we've had productive meetings, and I would say, as you deliberate, that we're very happy to continue finalizing our agreement with him and his crew and others. That's not a problem from the staff's perspective. And I'll tell Gordon, I've not, I just, I'm brand-new here. I've, well, like 22 months or 23 months or something, but I agree with everything you said about that building. And, and I would only say that what we're, what we're doing here and what staff has recommended in the, in the Board letter, which I'm assuming you've probably read, which is a pause and kind of a pivot to, to something, does not eliminate or, or risk having, continuing to have conversations with, with smart people who have some good ideas. And I would just say, make us an offer, you know? Make, make us a good offer, and if that offer works well for the county and our needs, and for you, and we get the whole big picture down here, I would, I, that was, it would, it would be something I would bring back to, to my bosses with a recommendation. So totally open to that, and I know I have a, a meeting scheduled with a couple of you sitting there on Thursday to talk about some specifics, and so I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah. Mr. Keller, come on up.
Good afternoon now. Jim Keller. Good to see you guys, and, and thanks for, thank you, Ryan, for responding to my email last week. Gordon and I share a lot of similarities and history here in Napa, and, and a strong desire to see some progress. And a lot of this progress is actually in motion. The point I wanted to make right now is that, as you guys, you guys can see with your budget, that, that $200 million budget, time is, is the enemy of developers, and, and time is money, so goes the saying. And, by the way, Will, Will Phelps is a partner of mine with some projects downtown, and we've been watching this process over the years, and like Gordon, eagerly anticipating something to break free with Carruthers. The, the point I want to make, and, and my desire to see something happen with Carruthers, is that things take so much time to get done. And the Carruthers Building is tied to the Second Street Garage. The feasibility of a project getting done with either one of those separately is not very strong. So, what, my goal is to, to work with Ryan, help you guys figure out a way to, to get out of Carruthers, and at the same time, work with the City of Napa to do something with the Second Street Garage, which, which I know for a fact that they want, want to see something done with that. So, in a perfect world, we, we get something done to where both of those are bundled together, and not only is it just an eyesore, but that whole side of First and Main gets developed. Will and I own the First and Main parcel together right on the corner there. But once that can get combined with the Carruthers and the Second Street Garage, now we have something that not only eliminates an eyesore, but also takes that half-billion-dollar development to a billion-dollar development, because that whole wave moves from First and Main down First, and then even provides some, some additional path into the post office development that I'm working on too. So between the three of those projects, we now have a completely revitalized downtown, or substantially revitalized downtown, and a lot of momentum, and, and I think something that all of us would be extremely proud of, and, and will really boost up the vibrancy and opportunity we all have down here. I also appreciate the county being down here, near downtown. It's great for businesses, restaurants, and all that sort of thing, so. And I'm also sensitive to your budget, I'm going to make that clear. But I appreciate the conversation, look forward to working with you guys more. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to call out, having the three of you sit through a lot of meeting, and, you know, listen to what we're addressing and thinking about, and what the needs of our staff are, is, is really great. So I think having good communication, I'm glad to hear about this upcoming meeting, and see where, what we can explore. And also, you, you're able to hear a little bit about, we need to make sure that our staff have the facilities that they need to do their jobs the best they can, so, looking forward to that going forward. So I'm watching the time, and I would like to ask that each of my colleagues can make some comments, ask some questions, but also be mindful, so that we can, we can be deliberate here about providing some direction, and then let everyone take a break for lunch. So Supervisor Ramos, I will turn to you first, and I'll just work our way down.
Thank you so much, and thank you to LPA for the work that you've done. I, I think I'm most impressed by the fact that you can make the ugly side of this building look pretty, and so that graphic was very helpful. No, I, I think my comments here are going to be taking us a, really, a step back, and... and Director Letterer, you know, talked about the certificate of occupancy on the jail and the number of years that it took us to, to get here. And I want to really emphasize the reason the jail was built in, what, 12 years' time, right? 12 years' time from conception on, which is really short in government years for a project of that size. As of right now, the largest capital project that this county has ever seen, and the only reason that happened is because this county had a fiscal plan, had the prudence to be putting excess ERAP away into accumulated capital outlay. I've said this before, I am incredibly troubled by the fact that we are sitting here discussing projects that started at $140 million, now inching towards $200 million, and we don't have a fiscal plan and prior fiscal policies set in place to ensure that we are saving. I appreciate the minimalist scope, but that minimalist scope still comes with a price tag at the end that we will have to do this, and it will be more than $200 million. Like, this is simply a Band-Aid for getting us to where we need to be. So for me, I, I don't want to make decisions, I, I don't see this as facilities planning this minimalist scope. I see this as contained within what needs to be an updated capital plan that specifically addresses deferred maintenance. And when you look at our capital plan, which, you know, I, I think we, CEO needs to bring that capital plan up, back up to us, and when you look at the capital plan, and it, it goes through and it's telling us, like, the buildings and the ages of the buildings and when they were built and the projects that are needed, we have got to, on top of that layer, which ones need fixing more quickly, of which, you know, First Street Carruthers, 1127 First Street, I'll never really quite get there, Carruthers, is most definitely in, in need of, of investments to ensure that, that we are able to, to house our employees. So for me, I want to see a financial plan. I've, I've asked for this. I've asked for it a number of times. It's not enough to say that the debt service would be $9, $9 million to go out and borrow every dime, even if we were to make that decision at this moment right now. That $9 million is something that is not previously planned for. We need to make sure that we are moving with finances forward, that we are ensuring that we are providing the space for our employees that, that they need. And while I do appreciate the, the interest that has been expressed in regards to the Carruthers Building, you know, I, I will say, while it may be an eyesore for people, while it, I'm, I'm sorry, those that think that it's a blemish in downtown, I cannot underestimate the value that that building has brought to the county of Napa. The Carruthers Building is where families walk in to provide self-sufficiency for dependent, for children, and to go to child support services, children like my children. Carruthers Building is where victims of crime walk in to have witness protection. It is where criminal defendants walk in to ensure that their due process rights are being defended by our public defenders. It's where our democracy lives, because that's where our elections offices are. It may not be pretty, but I will say this, just because we haven't planned for this moment at this time, I'm not willing to discount that building, because its value to the county of Napa is far greater at this moment in time because of the services that come through. I think instead of simply just looking at how we're going to piece the meal this together, I think we need to have a true discussion, starting with finances forward, of how we're going to get ourselves out of this deferred maintenance hole, and how we are going to build for the future of this county, and how we're going to make sure that we invest in a workforce that is able to bring the very best of talent that they have to offer each and every day. Our 1,600 employees deserve that. We, as leaders, have to do the hard work, and, and, and maybe it comes with some hard decisions where we really have to limit ourselves, but we need to start having those discussions of how we're going to invest in capital, just like our predecessor board did 12 years ago, of which we get the benefit of receiving that certificate of occupancy on the jail today.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Manfree, do you have comments or direction that you want to share?
Sure. That was hard to follow. Wonderful job, Supervisor Ramos. Just briefly, I know it's late and I'm new to the board, so I'm still thinking all this through carefully. Generally, I support continuing the PLA process in, you know, whatever form it takes as this unrolls. I think that will be a good thing for the community overall, and I think that it would be helpful if this county CEO could continue the conversation with Jim Keller and/or anyone else about, you know, opportunities that may present themselves, you know, even in light of the many good things that the Carruthers Building currently houses. You know, I just, I don't see a reason to stop that conversation just yet. I think it's good to explore possibilities, and, and I would just second the call for a robust financial plan for this whole process, because, because that's obviously the responsible way to do business.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. Supervisor Gallagher.
I will start by saying ditto to Supervisor Manfree, and also very strongly agree with Supervisor Ramos on the fiscal policy that allows us to reduce our reliance on financing of any project, whether it's maintenance or, you know, new, new facilities, whatever. Yeah, we really need to be finding a way to save some of the money, and I do also agree that I would like to make sure that the PLA discussion continues. I understand how everyone feels about 1127 First. I agree that, you know, our services are of utmost importance. I'm not as concerned about where they come from in terms of the venue as, you know, as long as that is accessible to the public and works for people who need to come and receive those services. So if there is a way to do that, and also allow the city and our development community to move forward on that corner, that's great. We have to make sure, obviously, that our services are, come first and that our, our constituents, our public, our clients are able to receive those services when they need them, and that those are fully accessible, but in agreement with my, my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Alessio.
Yes, I'm in much agreement with, with my colleagues too. Thank you everybody for your comments. You know, a project this size, it's inevitable. It's going to have to be financed. There's no way around it. We're not going to be able to save enough money to be able to do this out of, out of pocket. It's just, I don't see the feasibility. I don't know anybody, anybody else who's been able to do that, and if I'm wrong, please, please correct me and show me, give me a good example. That said, I do agree with this, the, the economic uncertainty right now is a hard time to move forward on any big financial project, and especially one that has no money saved for it. So I do agree with putting a pause on this at this time until we know how things are going to shake out with the economy and, and with the funding that we depend on, both through the state that's now looking at a $25 billion plus, I heard it could be up to a $50 billion, you know, debt situation, to, you know, federal funds that we depend on. There's just so much unknown. It's just a tough time, I think, for us to really move forward on, on financial risk. In terms of the Carruthers Building, 1157 First Street, and I really appreciate Supervisor Ramos's comments, because those services are so critical to our community and to many who are the most vulnerable in our community. I'm okay with us looking at a different space, whether it be the space that Mr. Keller proposed, if there is some kind of feasible financial agreement that would work for that, to open that space up, but as long as the ser, the services come first, because the services meet a critical need. But I'm open to having our CEO talk with the developer, this developer or others, if there's an opportunity that makes sense, to keep our staff in downtown Napa, because there is a vitality issue, both with our staff that enjoys to be downtown and the economic stimulus that it continues to provide to the city of Napa, who is our partner. And, you know, and I would agree also, CEO, also, I know that you've reached out to the city manager of Napa. You've had this, had a conversation about the impacts, potential collaboration. That collaboration's been talked about before, multiple times before. Is there a way to do a city-county shared project? It's never panned out that it's been feasible, but I think the conversation, keeping that open, is, is always positive, especially if we're going to take a time of pause. So I agree, you know, our CEO has a, a strong business mind, and for him to continue those discussions, to continue the discussions with our building trades, thank you so much for that. I see multiple benefits from that and support that effort also. I think at this time, I, I'm just going to go, you know, the areas in terms of the, the deferred maintenance hole, it is a maintenance hole, but we have no choice but to address it for our staff and our employees. We need to take care of them in the short interim, and it's tough. It's going to be, you know, $20 million possibly, I'm hearing, but maybe not. Am I incorrect? I'm looking at Director Letterer right now. He's looking.
No, as I said, those are estimates, and there's, there's some decision-making that can be made as opposed to what needs to be done tomorrow versus what maybe could wait a year or two.
Okay.
For instance, the need to move probation is obviously critical. Child support goes with that. The work at Building Four is critical. Some of the other stuff, we can, we can make decisions.
Great. And I really, honestly, I, I like, I would, this is out of what we've discussed and what we will be discussing in the future potentially, but now that the jail, we have this beautiful new jail, and to repurpose a couple of those floors in the interim is great, and honestly, I like to keep the county intact as possible in this footprint of downtown core, so whether it's a new building in the long term or whatnot, that's in the future to be discussed, but it makes sense to utilize and address those critical areas of deferred maintenance for our staff in this interim, if the board, and I think I'm hearing everybody does agree, to kind of put a pause at this time for many good reasons, with knowing that we need to address a long-term decision. That also needs to include how AI is going to impact the workforce, how, you know, workforce continues to travel, so much of it continues to travel from out of county to be in county, and, you know, COVID-forced work, workforce, work, working from home, remote work from home, but that might still continue, especially with the AI impact may continue to be more of the model, you know, for staff retention and for talent here. So I don't think we need to start from scratch, but I do think and agree with that we need to put a pause at this time, continue those conversations and the collaboration as we look ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of great comments, and I'm hoping that staff is making some sense of, of all the different points that are being made. I would like to follow up with a couple of thoughts. I do like this idea of having, I think the phrase you used Supervisor Ramos, a capital plan that addresses deferred maintenance, and that allows for us to have a plan, and then what the, what we put on the shopping list, we can, we can tweak that, but those, those things could proceed apace kind of in parallel. So I think an overarching concept for me is that, rather than a pause, I like the idea of a pivot, because I think even if we don't move forward with the option four as fully fleshed out, I think we have a lot of things that we can still be doing. So I, I'm going to use the term pivot. I first want to say thank you to LPA. That was a great presentation, and I think there's a lot of valuable information that you have provided to us, so I don't want to lose that. I think you've shared a lot about how we're currently, you've taught us a lot about how we're currently using spaces and how we could make some improvements. So Director Letterer, I support the, the kind of immediate needs that we need to get done. What I'd like to see now is that those options fleshed out with information that we've learned from LPA, so when we're talking about, you know, what to do with 650 Imperial, that we make sure we're capturing the work that these guys have just done. So I, I don't want that information to sit on the shelf, but I think it should continue to influence what we know. Also, like this idea of continuing to work on the PLA, again, with this, let's have as much ready as we can. There's no reason to wait on that. And in general, I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues and staff is that we have certain items that we need to do. We have, we have other items that we'd like to do, and we have, the ones we need to do have different timelines. So a, a deliverable id like back is something that helps us map out that list. So we know that this, the, the status of Carruthers needs, you know, we put those HVAC in, we know we, HVAC, and we know we need more to do there, but that, I think, would be really helpful for the board in thinking about how we move the, the puzzle pieces around here, too. I think, I think that is it for my comments at this point. Again, I would love to figure out how we can make this, and not necessarily an ongoing agenda item, but get some kind of report back in a couple months about the, the decisions that you, Steve, think that we need to proceed on, or, or, and you, CEO, Allsop. And finally, again, appreciate our partners in the private sector being here, because I do think we want to make sure we keep talking about what our opportunities are. Thanks. And that's me again, so I'll bring it back. So at this point, I am going to suggest that we break for lunch unless there's other, just to make sure we, wrapping up on this item. We don't have any public comment, further public comment in the room or on the phones. Supervisor Ramos.
Chair, I think if we're judicious with time, we could knock this out in 15 minutes.
I agree.
Yeah, I think we could knock.
Everyone wants to do that. Okay, we'll go for it. So that brings us to our next item, which will be, let's see, we've got to go back. Why don't we go to item 11A at this point? And this is to appoint one, we have three applicants on the Napa County Airport Advisory Commission, to, to serve on the Napa County Airport Advisory Commission. We have one seat available, and the, the three names are Robert DeYoung, Jason Johnson, and Stephen Waller. We have all of the applications on file, and we have a letter of recommendation. So I think I'm going to turn it over to you, Ms. Hoskins, to help us understand what the commission's recommendation was.
Thank you, Chair. The commission's recommendation was stated that Robert DeYoung be appointed. They met at their commission meeting, and the commission, not staff, decided that they would move forward with Robert DeYoung to the board to make that decision.
Okay, and so that's a recommendation to this board?
Correct.
Okay, so I will go ahead and ask if there's any public comment in the room or on the phones on this item? Okay? Then I will bring it to the board for discussion. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. I read all the applications. They all bring great strengths, though I will say, Robert DeYoung's lifetime experience, both professionally and personally, I can see why this was the recommendation to support him in this appointment, and I do support that decision. And so when there's time for a motion, I'm happy to make that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Just likewise, I'm happy to support the Airport Advisory Commission's recommendation, and I'd be happy to second that when it's time.
Okay. Great. Well, I will just say, I looked at all Well, I will just say, I looked at all the applications, too, and we, it's wonderful when we have multiple qualified applicants. I also, I know Jason Johnson. I think he would bring a lot to the board and has good experience and also board experience, so. And I also appreciate when the commission actually makes a recommendation for us, and so I want to be mindful of that. And I want to thank both of the other applicants and hope that they will apply again. So, with that, I will ask for a motion.
Thank you. And I, too, know Jason Johnson, and when I saw his name first, I was really excited about that. And I looked, again, I looked at all the different strengths, and, but I do understand and respect the recommendation that was provided to us. So, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert DeYoung to the Napa County Airport Advisory Commission, representing local Chamber of Commerce for positions whose terms of office to commence immediately and expire on September 17, 2025.
I'll second. All right. Motion by Supervisor Manfree, second, excuse me, motion by Supervisor Alessio, second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, we will now go to item 13A.
We have Tracy Cleveland on the phone to introduce this item.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Ms. Cleveland.
Tracy?
Yes.
Go ahead.
OK, perfect. So, when they call for me, I'll, or when you guys tell me to speak, I'll speak.
Go ahead and speak.
Go for it.
Oh, right now?
Right now. It's your turn.
OK, thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope I'm live.
You are live.
Oh, great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I apologize that I had to pop out. So, I wanted to do a quick introduction on 13A. So, I'm Tracy Cleveland. I'm the Napa County Act Commissioner and Sealer of Ways and Measures. I am on the phone today to request to open the public hearing in order to hear any objections about the proposed assessment for fiscal year '25, '26 for the Napa County Wine Grape Pest and Disease Control District. The engineer's report recommends the levying of the assessment at $1,150 per planted vineyard acre. The last fiscal year, the assessment was set at $12 per acre. So, this is a 50 cent per acre decrease. As a quick reminder for everyone, the Wine Grape Pest and Disease Control District was reauthorized in 2022 for an additional five-year term, which will expire in 2027. The pest district was formed in 2002 for the purpose of funding the prevention of Pierce's disease, preventing the potential spread of glassy winged sharpshooter, and was ultimately expanded in 2006 to include activities to control additional wine grape pests of concern. The pest district has a wonderful Board of Directors, and as an aside, and a quick plug, we have two vacancies on the board, so interested vineyard landowners and operators can view the vacancies on the county's Boards, Committees, and Commissions page and apply. Some of the good work that the pest district does includes funding pest trapping programs, including fine mealie bug, glassy winged sharpshooter, spotted lanternfly, and then a sentinel trapping program, which is intended for early detection of detrimental wine grape pests not known to exist in California. The pest district also supports various exclusion activities, including nursery plant inspections, and it funds biocontrol releases intended to help control vine mealie bug populations throughout Napa. Pest District Dollars also support University of California Research, that's headed up by Dr. Cooper and her team, and it supports outreach and educational seminars for growers and industry professionals, including a pest and disease workshop that is happening. One was happening this morning at 9:30, and then there's another one at 1:30, in both English and Spanish. So, they're wonderful events that we put on. And so, finally, assessment funds are collected and used to support these county-specific programs, as well as enhance existing state-supported programs. So, this concludes my brief staff report, and I'm happy to hear any comments or answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Are there questions or comments for Ms. Cleveland? OK, is there any public comment in the room or on the phone? OK, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for public comment, which we don't have? OK. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Cleveland, for the report. I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the levying of assessments for fiscal year '25, '26 on qualifying properties in the district.
Motion by Supervisor Gallagher, second by Supervisor Ramos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks so much. I will move us on to 13B, the introduction and intent to adopt an ordinance amending Section 10.12. Good afternoon, Ms. Sharp.
Good afternoon, Chair Cottrell and Supervisors. I'm Lee Sharp, not to be confused with Lee Sears, who was here earlier. And now, I am definitely standing between you and lunch, so I will try to be quick. I'm Lee Sharp. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'm here today to introduce an ordinance to amend Section 10.12 of Napa County Code as it pertains to county-owned and operated parking lots. This section of the code was last amended in 2019, and it includes the rules and regulations and enforcement authority for all county-owned and operated parking lots. As detailed in the staffing report, the changes would include authoring, authorizing the Director of Public Works to provide an exception to an existing requirement that electric vehicle parking stalls be used exclusively by electric vehicles that are actively charging. This amendment is proposed to address parking availability at the newly constructed replacement jail, where 32 parking stalls were created and only 11 of them are standard parking stalls. We maximize the number of EV parking stalls at the time, but in reality, you know, that's, we need more standard parking. Providing this flexibility will allow non-EV vehicles to utilize some of the EV stalls, and will help provide adequate parking for visitors to the replacement jail. While it's not anticipated that this exception will be frequent, it will provide some flexibility as needed to address parking needs, and it is obviously something that can be withdrawn, so it can be changed over time. Broadening, this amendment also includes broadening enforcement authority to include the Department of Corrections, the Director of Corrections, the Director of Housing and Community Services, and the Housing and Homeless Project Managers for parking violations at each of those shelter and the replacement jail, respectively. And then, it also regulates all county-owned and operated loading docks, rather than just the three that are specified currently in the code. The restriction that no unauthorized vehicle stop or park in the loading zone would then apply to all current and future county-owned or operated through leases loading zones. And there's other minor changes that include clarifying the period of time for which property removed from a parking lot pursuant to the code must be held, and general clarification throughout the code, making sure that everybody understands this for county-owned and operated, so not necessarily, we might be leasing the property. Penalties are not included in this ordinance, and no changes to penalties are recommended. And I am happy to answer any questions, but the requested action is to approve an intent to adopt an ordinance amending Section 10.12 of the Napa County Code pertaining to county parking lots.
Thank you, Lee. I will ask if there is any public comment on this item or on the phones? OK, again, I do need to open the public hearing for this, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And then, do, just, my colleagues have any questions about this? No. I have a question. It says in the staff report that there are 32 public parking stalls, of which only 11 are standard. So, does that mean that?
So, there's a combination of ADA stalls, EV parking stalls, van access for air requirement stalls. So, only 11 of them ended up being actual, like, regular parking stalls.
And how many are EV charging stalls?
Oh, I think there were 15.
OK. Wow, that's a lot. OK. That makes sense. All right, if there aren't further questions, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt, a motion of intention to adopt the ordinance to modify the parking Section 10.12.
I'll second.
OK. Motion by Supervisor Ramos, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Enjoy lunch.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Zeleny, I will turn it over to you for our item 14.
Yes, item 14A. This is listed as closed session, but we do not need to recess in the closed session. This is on the agenda merely for reporting out. This relates to existing litigation known as Edsel versus Jones and the County of Napa. I just need to read this statement into the record. "On May 6, 2025, the board met in closed session and voted unanimously to approve an offer of $63,000 to settle the litigation. I can now report the settlement has been accepted by the other side. This will resolve everything related to the matter involved in that case."
Thank you. Any questions at this point for that? OK, wonderful. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting till our next meeting, which will be, we've got the Monday meeting, June 16.
In memory of Jim O'Neill.
And today, we are adjourning in memory of Jim O'Neill. And thank you again Supervisor Ramos for your comments this morning. We are adjourned.